Good morning. We're going to get started with the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilman McAtee to lead us in the invocation, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Would everyone please stand?
Father, we come to you today with grateful hearts. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on Oklahoma City in the past. We pray that as we look to the future, that we might keep your goals for this city in mind, that we might take the past at the blessings and turn them into future blessings for our citizens of everywhere in the neighborhood. Thank you now for the way that you've led us and guided us. Thank you for our mayor and our council, and again, give us wisdom as we pursue these important matters for the future, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to have a budget meeting today, so we will call the council meeting to order, and then recess the council meeting, convene as the finance committee, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. Doug Doller gave a brief presentation on the budget last week at the city council meeting, and he's here today to repeat a little bit of the information, but also provide some new information as we start the budget process.
Yes, so we'll just take a quick look at some of the big picture items within the budget. Again, our budget's $1,263.8 million. That's a decrease of just a little over 1% over the current year's budget. Within the general fund, it's a more significant decrease, almost 5% there. Where we have the increases in our non-operating funds, which are things like MAPS III and the grants fund, is where we've got an increase there. As we look at position changes, we mentioned this last week, we've got 69 positions in police and fire that are being frozen. That means the positions are still there, the funding is not available in the coming year. We've got reductions in most other departments that result in a net decrease of 44 positions, or about a 1% decrease. If you can combine the frozen and the deleted positions-
Ken, Doug, stop right there just for a second. Of those 44 positions, I think we've placed so far 39 of them, or it's very close in that. So right now, there's about five people that have not been placed. Don't know if we'll place them all, but we've got another six weeks to try to get those other five or so positions placed.
That's very important. Yes, part of the reason we did the hiring freeze is we knew there were cuts coming, and we wanted to make sure there were open positions, and try to take care of our folks as best we could there. Again, if we tally up the frozen as well as the cut positions, it's about 2.4%, 113 positions that are affected by the downturn in revenues. I wanted to present here just a look at the departments that are not going to be presenting their budget to you as the finance committee, just again to see the impact across the various departments. You can see there's quite a variation in the level of cuts, and that really depends on whether they had the availability to either have other line items they could reduce, or generate some revenues to offset some of their cuts. One change I'd like to note there is in the city manager's office. You'll see it's an increase of five is what shows in the budget book, but that's because of a transfer of six positions from the public works department to the MAPS office. These positions were managing projects related to the MAPS projects. They were paid for in public works, but then they charged back their time to the MAPS projects. This just more accurately reflects the work that they're doing by moving them into the city manager's office. And you'll see that had that not been for that case, there would have been a reduction of one in the city manager's office, the public information and marketing office, deleted a position there as well, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, so, yeah, so we're not, yeah, we're not adding great staff, lots of staff to the city manager's office. It's really more reallocation of folks there. As we look at the revenues, again, the big picture, $1.264 billion is our budget, with taxes, of course, being the largest piece of that. I won't go into all the categories here. I do want to say that we do not have included in the budget impact fees that were recently adopted. We'll come back with a budget amendment during the year to include those into the budget, but that's not a piece of this budget.
And remember, those ones don't go into effect until January 1 of '17.
As we look at the general fund, again, you see how dependent we are on sales tax. Sales tax, 52.7% of our total, that's $248 million. Use tax is another 9.2%, or $37.9 million. So really, sales tax, either for goods purchased here in Oklahoma, or purchased out of state and used here, accounts for almost 62% of our general fund revenue. And I thought I'd just take a moment, if you have the budget book back in your office or with you here, page B13 in the financial summary section lists every revenue that we expect to receive in each fund. That's our revenue detail section. So again, you can see how much we're expecting in every specific revenue source throughout the general fund, and in each fund. As we turn to expenditures, just again, a quick look. Personal services is our largest single area of the budget, 36.1%. And although if you combined capital and our debt service, which the debt service is to pay for our geo-bonds, you get actually 41.4% of the total budget. So that capital portion of our budget is significant when you put those two pieces together. As we hone in on the operations piece of this, now personnel becomes the dominant area of expenditures, simply because it takes people to operate the city's business there. Within the general fund, again, you can see this is by service area, and this is where public safety dominates the general fund, again, at 64.4%. And really, that's kind of my segue to what's coming up next. We've got police and fire are going to be presenting their budgets today, as well as IT. IT falls into the general government function. You'll see that's our smallest category there within the general fund. So again, police, fire, and IT are today. Over the coming weeks, we'll have public works, utilities, public transportation and parking, development services, airports, parks and recreation, and then plan for budget adoption on June 14th, with the budget to take effect on July 1st. So I know you all are more interested in hearing about the departments, but if you have any questions about the overall budget, be happy to answer those here. Thank you very much.
The first presentation is for the police department, and Chief Bill City is here with us.
Good morning, mayor, council. I'd like to start by, Josh, by introducing Sergeant Josh Minter is going to be, he works in our planning and research, he's going to be running the slides. Rest of my planning and research that I can give credit to, Captain Ryan Mosher's here, Lieutenant Terrence Teal, business manager, Mike Stroup, and then Deputy Chief Ken McDonnell. I'd also like to share my appreciation with the Office of Finance for working with us through this process. It's always really a pretty pleasurable process. Even when we have to make cuts, it's a good working relationship, so I appreciate it very much. We're going to start with our mission statement. It hasn't changed. It's the mission of the police department is to provide public safety services that promote a safe environment and lessen the fear of crime to the Oklahoma City community, so that they can experience an enhanced quality of life. Our proposed budget for this year, you can see the total budget is $200 million. Our operating total is the largest part of that, it's $185 million. And then here's a breakdown in a pie chart, our general fund, it's about 63%, makes up the majority of it, along with our police sales tax of 23%. Our issue statements, we have four of them this year. Three of them remain the same over last year, with a few variations in those issues, maybe in strategies. The growing demand for police presence and services, coupled with the increasing scope and complexity of police services, if not adequately addressed, will result in slower response times, increased crime rate, reduction in crimes solved, decreased citizen satisfaction that we determine with our surveys every year, and then decreased traffic enforcement. Strategies is to continue the use of our overtime programs to address high crime areas. That includes a grant from the Safe Oklahoma Grant that we've received over the last few years. We use that in a combination with some of the overtime that we've had with the extra positions that we haven't been able to fill, and we've had the money in our budget. Increased traffic enforcement citywide, we attempt to always to do that and increase that as we can. Increased personnel investigations, operations, and community-based programs. In traffic enforcement, we just might note that we had, we actually, last year was a pretty high year for collisions. We had about 443 more collisions last calendar year over calendar year 14, and our fatalities were also up about 26% over the year before. Some of our results, demand for police presence and services through our survey, we surveyed the citizens, how they feel, how they feel citywide, if they feel safe. In 2014, our survey was 51%. Our target is 55. Those targets on those surveys were set back in 2005, when we first did, started our leading for results. That was the actual percentage, and what we kind of determined is we at least want to keep that percentage and do better, so that's kind of our benchmark, and has been since 2005. So you can see feel safe citywide in 14, 51%, and in 2005, we were up 2% to 53%. Satisfied or very satisfied with the quality of police services in 2014, it was 69%. Again, we were up 2% in 2005 during the survey, up to 71%, with our target being 72%. So we're a little bit low what our target was, or our actual was in 2005 in both categories. Okay, our demand for police services. What we measure, since our staffing study, we measure our priority one calls that we respond to within nine minutes and 30 seconds. That nine minutes and 30 seconds includes for the time the dispatcher actually picks up the call, answers the phone, processes the call, sends it to the dispatcher, then sends it to the officer. So that is the total time that we want to be able to actually respond and get there to that call within nine minutes and 30 seconds, and our target is at 80%. Right now, we're sitting at 71.1%. You know, our high over the last five-year period has been 75.76%, almost 76, and our low has been 70%. So we've hovered, we haven't ever dropped below 70%, but this year, this year, as you can see, physical year to date, we're at 71.1%, and our target again is 80%. Investigative clearance rates on our person crimes, nationally, we're always measured by our uniform crime reporting system. We report those crimes to OBN, to the state, and they forward those statistics to the FBI, and the FBI accumulates those nationwide. They actually give us two categories, they give us categories, overall percentage nationwide, then they also give us how we rate with cities that are our size. It's really a better comparison. This actually, what you see up here is the percentage that's usually reported in the papers, is just an overall percentage. And you can see here in 2014, the national UCR was 47.4% for person crimes, and ours was 52%. So we have always remained higher than the national average on our clearance rate, usually on both areas. But right now, if you look at our clearance rate in property crimes, we're about 4% below the national average over 2014. That's the earliest that we have, so usually those statistics come out in October, so they're almost a year behind usually when we get those. Now, our LFR is a little bit different story. We include all crimes, because UCR only picks up the real top priority crimes, the burglaries, those types of things, which they call priority one. Homicides, aggravated assaults, it doesn't pick up all assaults. We measure, we measure everything. We measure like, for instance, all assaults, we will measure those. If you look at all of our person crimes in our LFR actual, it's a 71.7% clearance rate, and our target's actually 68, so we're above that right now. In property crimes, it's 27.3%, and we're just right at what our target is for our person crimes. If you were to compare us, for instance, with our cities our size, I'll give you three different categories. In homicides, our clearance rate in 15 was 65%. If you look at other cities our size, the clearance rate is average 56%. So we're well above that. If you look at aggravated assaults, which we kind of prioritize and keep a close watch on, because it really tells us our violent crime trends more so than homicides, because they ebb and flow every year for various reasons. But aggravated assaults, our clearance rate's at 61% in 15, and the comparable city average is 43%. So we're considerably higher if you compare us to cities the same size. Arson for fire, this is kudos to the fire department, arson is 47% clearance rate, and the national average is 18%. So you can see our fire department does a much, much higher rate of solving arsons than the national average, so. Our total calls for service last year, and it impacts, our total calls, our total calls that we received last year went up by 9%. That equates to 265,000 more calls through the 911 center than we had the previous year. The calls dispatched was up 3%, because we don't dispatch every call. A lot of things we handle over the telephone, but if they need police service, last year we were up 3%, or equivalent of 116,000 more calls last year that we were actually dispatched Violent crime, the continued trend of violent crime, if not adequately addressed, will result in, and I'm happy to say that trend really since 2012 has been going down. Sometimes it doesn't seem like it when homicides are up, but I'll show you what our aggravated assaults chart looks like. Obviously, if it's not addressed, we'll have increased assaults and homicides, increased gang violence, increased demand on public safety services, and decreased feeling of public safety if not addressed. So our strategies for violent crime, increased police presence and enforcement in strategic areas, using overtime initiatives, both adding police officers, as you've done over the last three years, and then also being able to use some of those funds for unfilled positions for overtime, have helped us put additional visibility and personnel in some of those high crime areas. And that's what we have been doing, and we'll continue to do that, even though we're going to have to cut our overtime budget a little bit because of the freeze in the 48 positions. We will still continue to do that. Our safe grant, our safe grant actually, Oklahoma Safe Grant actually runs out in August, so if they don't renew our grant, then that project essentially, or those funds for that project will be eliminated. We will attempt to try not to lose what ground we gained over that period of time, but it'll be a little bit more difficult if we don't have those funds. Now, I understand that the legislature has committed to continuing those funding, the Oklahoma Safe Grant, and we will put it in application, but we won't know the results of that for a while, so. But right now, we're continuing it. We want to continue our efforts into reducing crime with community-based programs. We have quite a few what we consider community-based programs. We've got our FACT program, our school resources, our ambassadors, our bilingual unit triad. We have a program with gang call-ins, where we try to identify, or do identify, some of the most violent gang members that are getting out of prison, and meet with them and have call-ins. We're doing more town hall meetings, we started that, and we'll go into a little bit in another slide, the cadet program that will also go into. There's just a lot of things. Truancy unit, there's a lot of things that we do that are community-based to try to reduce, to try to reduce crime in the long term. Next slide. Our results for violent crime, by 2018, we want to reduce the number of aggravated assaults citywide by 5%, and by 18, reduce the number of gang-related deadly weapon assaults by 20%. The gang-related deadly assault, weapon assaults is fairly new, we've only been doing that now for a couple of years. This will be our, really, our first full year, where we've had previous data to pull from. But you can see for our actuals for aggravated assaults in 14 and 15, it was 3,144. We only have the data up through really February on aggravated assaults, which is 1,998. Our target is 3,000, which we think will be for next year. For 15 and 16, we should be under what our target would be, and for 17, 2987. Like I said, since 2012, we have reduced every year our aggravated assaults. And again, that's what I like to look at. People want to look at homicides that make headlines, but they go up and down. Homicide, as I've always said, is an aggravated assault with the worst possible outcome, so we want to look at those shootings, and that's what we're attempting to try to lower. Our gang-related deadly weapon assaults, our actuals in 14 and 15 were 62. Through April, physical year 15, 16, we have 42. Our target is actually 56 for 16 for next year. And I might add, you can leave it there, but I might also add that our drive-by shootings for the first part of our calendar year are actually up right now this year. We've had a different number of drive-by shootings this year. So this shows historical, this is our aggravated assaults, this is what I like to look at when I'm looking at trends for violent crime in Oklahoma City. You can see in 2007, we were at our lowest at 2831, and then you can see in 2012, where it peaked, actually, 2010 peaked, went down a little bit in '11, then went back up in '12. '12 is when we had, you know, we had homicides in the 90s, and so everybody was real concerned about that, as we were at the police department. We started some of our initiatives, you also started adding police officers, you also started giving us more officers to put on the street. Along with doing that, getting them out on the street, and being able to use some of those overtime funds that the city manager authorized, we felt it played a large part, and that's being able to target some of those high crime areas, and actually reducing a lot of those shootings, some of the violent crimes. So we're pretty pleased with that. It's, again, since its peak in 2012, you know, in 2013, we reduced it by 13%, 14, 16%, and 2015, 19%. So we're continuing that downtrend, and hopefully it'll continue this year. Right now, we're pretty flat, but we're hoping that that percentage increases. Advanced technology is another issue. The increased use of advanced technology in the commission investigation of crimes, if not adequately addressed, will result in increased time and resource requirements for investigators and solve crimes, increase crime, decrease citizen satisfaction. In the area of technology, we've really worked hard at trying to, really trying to get our officers trained and assigned to actually working with our investigators and trying to retrieve fiscal, you know, fiscal evidence from crimes, because criminals are keeping a lot of information, a lot of data on their, you know, on their computers. And so anything that we can find to help support, provide evidence to solve those crimes, that's what we do. And so almost, and a lot of search warrants and everything, there's going to be some type of computer, there's going to be an iPhone, there's going to be some type of, you know, some type of technology that we're going to have to have the expertise to do. So we spend quite a bit of money, usually pay for the training out of asset forfeiture, the equipment out of asset forfeiture, but really try to keep our staff up so they can support our investigators in their investigation, because it's becoming more and more and more of an issue, and I don't think it's going to, it's not going to get any less, so. Now you can see here the increased, a couple of our strategies that we're measuring, increase the number of digital media examinations, that's exactly what I'm talking about, smartphones, tablets, cameras. We have to have the expertise, we also have to have the certification, because those officers have to be able to testify in court. And the second one is 100% of all DNA cases submitted will be analyzed. Again, keep in mind, we're one of the, probably one of the few agencies across the country that our officers are out there in the field, will take DNA samples off of a burglary, if they think they have some samples. So we probably have more DNA samples than most departments do across the country, for the mere fact that we've trained our officers, and we cleared up, we cleared up some significant property crimes as a result of that. Obviously, on person crimes, DNA evidence is extremely important in those crimes that we don't have witnesses or things like that, or confessions, but DNA evidence is very important also, and has become more and more important in a lot of our property crimes, and our officers will be able to do that. But as a result of that, when we're two chemists down, which we have been most of the year, in trying to hire more chemists, then we've gotten behind. So, you know, it's, we're a little bit behind in those examinations. So when you see the next slide, you're going to see, you're going to see like the result in the bottom sector there, which is by 2018, 100% of all DNA cases submitted for property and person crimes will be analyzed within 90 days. That's what we'd like to be able to do. You can see our actual is at 39%. And the reason for that primarily is the fact that we've been down a couple chemists, and we've hired, we've hired an additional chemist over the last couple of years, and to get them in and get them working, get them hired, then it sets us behind when we're low on staffing there. But we think this is a doable target. It may not be doable in '17, but they talked me into setting it at that, because they want to give that, they want to try to attempt to do that. But our target is 100% within 90 days, and we want to be able to do that. The top result on electronic media device exams, you can see where our actual right now is 79%, and by '17, we want a target of 90%, then 100%. So, and that may require more training and additional officers and being able to do that job. I know when we did the new headquarters building, the largest space that I built into growth is our criminal intel unit, where our examiners work out of. So that's just anticipation, that's probably going to be one of the fastest-growing areas in law enforcement, is going to be that, those technical investigators that can, that are trained and have the ability to do this. Procedural justice, this is the new issue for this year, and it is, you know, it is a national, obviously a national issue. It's been an issue since Ferguson and a number of other issues, particularly with the minority communities. So we're going to put it in our, we're going to put it in our, into our, one of our issues, and basically this procedural justice is defined as the idea of fairness in the process that, in the process that resolves disputes and allocates resources. It is not a practice, but a philosophy, and a movement which promotes positive organizational change, upholds police legitimacy in the community, and enhances officer safety. And the continuing need to maintain increased public trust, if not addressed, will result in negative public perception, decreased ability to recruit applicants, and decreased citizen satisfaction and cooperation. Some of the strategies is to continue to review and revise policies and procedures. It's a key component of procedural justice. We have to have those procedures and policies in place, so officers know what's expected of them, knows what the changing philosophy of the police department in this city is in when dealing with our public, and how we'll deal with calls for service. Policies and procedures are critical to make some of those changes, so that they're fair and equitable. Continue to participate in community outreach programs and partnerships, and we'll go into that a little bit further in another slide. Introduce concept procedural justice to employees. We'll provide training to all employees on the procedural justice concept. They've already gotten a little bit of that in service, but we're working on further training so that it is incorporated into our training, and that officers are very aware of that, and it becomes habit about how we do things in the future. And the continuing implementation of body-worn cameras, and we'll show, I have another slide that goes into that a little bit too, and what we've done. By 2016, 100 body-worn cameras will be in service. They are in service now, we have accomplished that. We'll discuss it further in another slide. By 2016, 100% of officers will have received training on the concept of procedural justice. This will include any policies and procedure changes, it'll include training in de-escalation. De-escalation is a huge part of procedural justice. It's a huge part of the 21st century policing documents that were produced last year on a national level. De-escalation is a better way to do policing, it's a better way of making it safe for the people that we have to serve, and also it's safer for the officers. And I could give a lot of examples as to why. But de-escalation, we are going to incorporate de-escalation into our training. We've already did some training about a year ago. We did some scenario-based de-escalation classes in our in-service, and I can tell you right now, knock on wood, you know, we were averaging about 70 officer-involved, not 70, seven, six or seven officer-involved shootings a year, and since we've done that de-escalation training, we've only had two. And that's all, and that's almost a year long now, so officers are doing a great job every day, and a lot of them did it anyway, de-escalated, but we're going to actually put it in our policies and procedures and do a lot of, incorporate a lot of training, both with our recruits and our officers that are through in-service, so. By 2018, 70% of more citizens will be satisfied again. That'll be based on, that'll be based on the surveys. And hopefully, if we're doing things that seem more fair and equitable to the community, then we'll get more- to the community, then we'll get more favorable scores on our surveys, is what the hope is. We changed some policies already. We changed shooting into cars this last year. These are all, these are all, you know, part of procedural justice. We're not doing that unless being shot at, sending supervisors to all gun-related calls. And then we also reduced our, we also changed our procedures on speeds, where we give officers clear guidance on how fast they can drive going to calls and when, because we were seeing a huge problem with officers driving too fast. So we think that's going to have a huge impact, and already has, on how fast these officers respond to calls on, on a daily basis. Our budget changes, you can see that our two point six percent equates to three point five million. Again, the department will not fill more than eleven twenty, one thousand one hundred and twenty positions at, with, with the freezing of forty-eight positions. We're currently authorized eleven sixty. We have sixty-six people in this next recruit class, which is the largest class we've ever had. I never, we've never had anybody, we don't have anything higher than usually about fifty-six.
Yeah, let's stop there just for a second, because I think that's really significant. We've kind of had a bit of a lid on that, and Bill and the staff has done a really good job of trying to do some things that can expand those classes, so that we can get more officers trained in each class, and really give them credit, because they were put up with that challenge of, how can we get more people trained, not get them on the street? And Bill and the staff has done a really good job of, of coming to meet that challenge.
Thank you. Now, the training staff has done a great job. Deputy Chief, now Deputy Chief Becker was the major out there, and his staff did a really, really good job with recruiting for this class. And so I have to give them kudos for that, because they've worked very hard at it. But saying that, if this class graduates, and if we have our normal attrition rate, we will probably be at one thousand one hundred and twenty, if not a couple officers over that, by the time our next class, next class graduates. That being said, if the, if the forty-eight positions continue to be frozen, then we, we will probably have to delay, or at least have a smaller class, just to, because I, just to be, just to handle our attritions, attrition rate versus adding those new positions. So we'll be pretty full at one thousand one hundred and twenty at that point. We'll have more, we now have more officers than we've ever had on the street, and by the time this class gets out, it'll, we'll have, we'll be at that eleven twenty. Also, the change, so we've civilianized fleet administrator position. The sergeant we had in there retired, and we're going to civilianize that positions, which is a savings. And then we're going to begin the process of civilianizing fire dispatchers. Fire could probably talk to that, maybe even better than I could. Basically, you have eighteen, you have eighteen fire dispatchers over there this next year, this next physical year. The plan is, is to, is to reduce that to nine, and replace it with nine civilians, and we take over, we take over that call-taking process. Right now, we take the calls and all, we transfer them to fire. The changes will be, we'll actually be taking the calls, processing those calls, and actually dispatching those calls at some point, all eighteen of those positions. But, and Fire could also, could address that. Some of the programs, you've heard about the police cadet program. We made a presentation to department heads last week, and got some really positive feedback from, from department heads. You know, you can see that our, we've partnered in the cadet program, Metro Tech, we've partnered with them, local colleges and high schools. Metro Tech takes all, all intercity kids. And, and, and the good thing about it is a large percentage of those are minority kids. And we already have a partnership with Oklahoma City Schools. We work with them on a regular basis. So we are limiting, we're really limiting our, our program to those intercity schools along, with Oklahoma City. Now, we do take some kids from Millwood, because Millwood now is, is, is part of the Metro Tech program, so we've included Millwood in that. Douglas has its own program, so we are going to work with Douglas in their program also, to a certain extent. And you can see that we had fourteen students this year graduated from Metro Tech Cadet. Now, there are cadet programs across the country that take these high school student, take these high school students, and when they turn eighteen and graduate, their program's over. Don't know of any other programs doing it the way we're doing it, because beyond the Metro Tech program, we're going to have an OCPD Cadet Academy, which we will start with, with twenty of those cadets. So the kid, so those youth coming out of high school will move into qualifying youth, and the ones that want to will move into our Cadet Academy. And we want to keep our hands on them and work with them. We, OSU, OSU Tech here, OSU OKC has gotten a grant to provide free college. OCSC does provide free college to Oklahoma high school kids. We help them with that process, the paperwork. One of the things that Tomas Doherty, who I have to give all the credit to on this, who's, this is kind of his, his, you know, his program that he came up with, he said one of the biggest issues in working with the kids is that you've got smart kids, but a lot of them didn't go to college because they didn't have any help filling out the paperwork. They didn't know how. They didn't know, they didn't, so they didn't do it. And so we're there for them. We've got a lot of officers now that are volunteering. We want to have a mentor for every one of those twenty candidates, police officer mentors that will keep in touch with that, that, that youth. They're going to work special events. They have to, so I think, I believe it's sixteen hours a month, they have to come and work with us and volunteer. You can see, you'll see once, maybe, there's one slide where they have volunteered at, at an event in South Oklahoma City, a Hispanic event. So they will volunteer, they'll work with ambassadors, they'll work with police officers. But we also provide them with jobs. Go ahead and go to the next page. You can see some of our partners. Of course, Metro Tech, Public Schools, Millwood. You have OSU Tech, the county. You have OU Health Science Center, Integris. It's just a few of them. Integris has given them jobs. They're going to go work for them. They have to, they have to work, they have to volunteer. We give them uniforms, so that they're officially part of the program. And then they have to go to school, they have to work, and they have to volunteer. They have to do all those three things if they want to be part of that. And what we're hoping is, is that these are going to be future police officers for us. And again, it's a way for us to try to get at some of the minority community. I can tell you right now, in this class of, this cadets, this class of twenty, we're going to have nine Hispanics, seven African-American, four white, eleven females, nine of them bilingual. That's pretty good. That's, that's pretty good. So, I mean, that's the hope. I mean, it's, we'll, we'll see what the future holds, but it, we're all pretty, everybody's pretty excited, and the officers are getting excited about it, because they're volunteering to be mentors with these, with these youth. So pretty excited. Body worn cameras, one hundred cameras. We started with one hundred cameras, a pilot project in January. We purchased a product called WatchGuard. Provide the best sound, provided the best picture. Policy and procedures were established and written. Training was provided to participating officers. Cameras were assigned to second shift officers. We now have one hundred and fifty-nine officers actually using the cameras. What, a, a great surprise for us out of this was that by going to WatchGuard, we actually could use one, a camera for multiple officers. For some of the other products, you had to assign a camera to an individual officer. So for a hundred and fifty-nine officers, you'd have to buy a hundred and fifty-nine cameras. Well, we're not. We have a hundred cameras. It's, it's really, and as a result, we should be able to cover our entire operation with half the cameras, probably half the cameras that we anticipated. Now, that's not the most expensive part. The most expensive part, and a lot of it, is staffing. We've had to hire additional staffing and things to manage those for open records requests and those types of things. But as you can see, right now, we have approximately twenty-one thousand videos that we have recorded. Now, right now, also with the hundred cameras, though, because, because at a certain point, a lot of those videos are automatically purged if it's not waiting for trial, or there's no complaint, or there's no lawsuit. We're probably, right now, averaging about thirteen thousand videos within our system. And we chose to, IT's working with us, and we chose to do in-house storage on servers, which is a lot cheaper than using the cloud, which is a lot, a lot of what some of the companies are promoting. Right now, I think it's pretty successful. The officers are, are, seem to be pretty happy with it. And we'll see if you can, we'll see if you can pull up this video. This is an example, if you haven't already seen one. We'll see if we get the sound. I weren't sure whether the sound was going to work up here. I guess not, right, Josh?
Yes, sir.
Does the sound work?
Okay.
How you doing?
I'm well, sir. How are you?
I am good.
Good, good. You have your ID with you?
I do.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. This is all I need, man. This'll be good. Any idea why I stopped you, sir?
I rolled that stop sign.
Yes, sir.
My son's got diarrhea, and we're trying to...
Ah, I'll hustle, I'll hustle. Sit tight, I'll get you guys out of here.
There's a guy who stopped on traffic that said where he was going, but one of his, somebody in the car hadn't been feeling well.
Write your phone number, sir. All right, same show on the X, we'll get you guys out of here.
You can see where we, you know, we pixelated his face, so we have the ability to do all that on open records.
He'll be a cop like this top sign next time.
We can release the video about having him set in the video.
I guess the neighborhood association has kind of sent a letter to Hefner, wanting an officer watch out.
He's telling them that they had a complaint in the neighborhood, and be careful that we're going to be there for a while. So usually what happens is a lot of the neighborhood people live there, obviously, get caught up in that. He wrote, he wrote it with citation. But the, the video's really, very, very good. It was the best quality video, day and night. The audio's very, very good. It's, I know you couldn't hear it there very well, but anyway, it's, I, I think everybody's pretty happy with it, and haven't heard too many, too many issues. We're working through our policies and procedures with, with the FOP now. We've still got some issues that they want us to address, so we're working, trying to work through that. Our social media, can't thank my staff enough for the work they do on this and how creative they are. With the police department, we use Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. You know, in Facebook, we have a hundred and eight thousand followers. Twitter, we have almost twenty-four thousand. Nextdoor's fairly new. The city's using that too, but we, we make contact with all the neighbors. That's a program where neighbors in neighborhoods can, can talk, can talk to each other one-on-one, those types of things. So we, we monitor that. It provides public, public safety messages that we put out, crime incidents, crimes that have occurred, videos that have occurred, photos of wanted suspects. We get a lot better, you know, we get a lot more out there than just having to rely on the media for getting pictures of suspects, or convenience stores that have videotapes, and having people help us identify those. Solicit, solicitation of crime tips, recruiting information. We're doing a lot with recruiting now, and getting recruiting information out over our Facebook, because that's what people are, that's what the young, young, young adults are now using. So, and older adults are, so. And then community interaction, you can't, we can't replace the benefit we've gotten from the community interaction on these. And, and mostly it's video. You'll see, this video right here that you see, or this Facebook post, was from this young man on the ride of the video. He took a selfie of the officer putting gas in his car, and wanted to let everybody know that this officer, he ran out of gas coming from Norman. I can't remember where he's from, but, and just wanted everybody to know this officer took him, got him some gas, and is filling up his tank. And this is happening a lot. Officers aren't taking their own videos. This is, most of these posts are the public taking them. And it's just, and, and this particular post, it set a record. We have over four million hits on this post, over four million hits. A previous one was three points, like, two million. And this one was within a very, very short amount of time. So, and our officers, our officers out there are doing a great job, doing a lot of good things, and those things that we normally wouldn't see. We usually see a lot of negative stuff, because that's what makes it, makes the news. It allows us to put a lot of real positive things out, to really let people know the human side of officers and some of the great work that they're doing. So it's been a hu, huge success, more than I have ever anticipated. Our community outreach programs, there's, these are just a few. We, we do, we do a lot of others, but obviously, as I mentioned before, but the one we did last year was Coffee with Cops, once a month. Panera Bread had, had, had agreed to sponsor these and pay for the coffee, and it's been, it's been pretty successful, having the officers go. The idea is getting the officers from the division there, not just me. I didn't even go to that one. I want people to interact with the officers on a, on, where they're not being written a ticket, or there's not something negative going on. So the officers get a better feel and have more contact with the community they actually patrol and serve. We're beginning some citywide community outreach meetings. We did one in Spring Lake in March, very successful. We actually serve food, which kind of helps, helps draw people. If you've got some food, all right? So we're going to do a lot more of this. We're going to do it on, we're going to do it ongoing. We really want to do it in all the divisions. I mean, Panera Bread's aren't in every division, so, you know, we're going to, we're, we want to do a lot of different things in the divisions, more on a regular basis, a quarterly basis, so that we hit different parts of the city and different neighborhood areas, so that we can interact, have the officers interact. We have a PAC summit and forums at the state capitol. We had it in January. It, it really was based along the lines of the Twenty First Century policing, that, that procedural justice issue. Several departments were involved, Midwest City, Norman, to mention a couple of the largest. And we, we, we worked through some of those issues and kind of signed agreements that this is what we were going to do. We were going to try to adhere to some of the procedural justice, and some of the recommendations that go along with that, from that report. Jam and Hoop Fest, we've done for several years, northeast side. They do, they do weekly, they do weekly things in the summertime and throughout the year, but they have one big jam at Hoop Fest in the summertime, which has grown and grown. It's gotten very, very large. And we have a lot of support for that, and get quite a few of our young intercity youth out to that, to that. So it's, it's been very successful. Kalia, we just went through a re-accreditation. We, we, we have gone through that, we've gone through that since March of two thousand and seven. We go through that every three years. It's changing. Their processes are changing with Kalia, where we'll actually have to do more on a yearly basis than every four years. They'll come in instead of three years. But like I said, we've been accredited since two thousand and seven. There's less than half of the major city chiefs that are actually accredited. Large cities have a, it's a tough time. You have four hundred and eighty-four standards, so a smaller agency doesn't have as many standards to meet. But we're, we're thirty, we're one of that thirty out of sixty-eight major cities that are Kalia accredited. And there's only five percent of all law enforcement that's, that's nationally accredited. So we're, we're pretty proud of that, and our staff works pretty hard. And again, we just went through that process here last month, and we're supposed to receive, in July, we'll receive that official accreditation that'll be handed out at their conference in Baltimore. And that's what I have. I'll entertain any questions.
I have three. The first, maybe I missed it. How, how much are we decreasing overtime?
How much what?
Are we decreasing over, the overtime?
Okay. We were using, we were using over nine hundred thousand, more than nine hundred thousand of that overtime from those added positions for, for targeted areas. We're cutting forty-eight of those positions, so we're trying to cut that almost half, and limiting it to about five hundred thousand overtime right now out of some of those positions. Like I said, I still have, I still have some of those positions, like sixty-six. Now, we've hired them, but we hire them at a, at a lesser rate, and we feel like we still have some funds that we could use from that salary savings for overtime. So, but it's five, cutting it about five hundred thousand is what we'll be cutting it. Now, that doesn't include other overtime. That doesn't include our Oklahoma Safe Grants overtime that we get. So if, if, if that's ref, if that's funded again, we'll continue to do that project that's off of Tenth Street out in northwest Oklahoma City, that project. Hopefully, we're hoping we'll get refunded for that again, because we hire, not only do we have officer overtime, but we hired a part-time code enforcement, which is critical to improving those areas. Then we hired two positions to actually go in and work with apartment complexes, because I didn't realize it when we did that, that initiative, and not, you know, I've talked to, to, talked to both Councilman Griner and McAtee about it. There's like, there's over forty hotels, over forty apartments in that small area. Apartments are a huge challenge. So we hired a couple people to actually work directly with those apartment complexes to try to improve their processes, improve their lighting, security, and those types of things, to, to make that area safer.
So that four-square-mile area is exempt, or that's separate from these cuts? And in general, the overtime program will be cut in half, by fifty percent?
Right. What we've, what I've done, what, what I have, what I have done is I've taken, because we have filled every new recruit class that came out, I allowed them to fill that four-shift on Saturdays. Because when you added the positions, part of that was we're going to have a, we're going to have a Saturday shift, an overlap shift. So we put more officers on the street during those peak times of priority calls. I filled two divisions. Every time a recruit class came out, I'd fill a division. So I filled, I filled the southwest division with Saturday to Saturday program, and then I've got Saturday to Saturday and Spring Lake program. The only places I don't have the Sa, excuse me. Saturday to Saturday, excuse me, is, is, is Hefner and Santa Fe, southeast. So what I've, what I've, right now, that, what I have done is restrict the overtime primarily to Hefner and southeast, because I have additional officers on those Saturday to Saturdays in both those other two divisions. So I'm trying to be... So I'm trying to be, they don't have, those divisions that don't have that, those extra Saturday to Saturday officers, I'm trying to give them some more overtime to work with. That's not to say that we won't have some overtime used in the other divisions, because, you know, if we have to, we have to, we're not going to let things get out of hand.
Second question is, can you comment on your position, the department's position, and if you know it, the FOP's position on the House Bill 3098, in which both the House and the Senate passed with veto-proof margins, open carry without a permit or training requirements?
Well, I, I don't know what FOP's position is on that.
Okay.
Open carry without any type of permit, I think it's, I don't support that at all, at all. I think that's a huge mistake, I think it's, it'll, it'll really make it hard on officers to enforce, I mean, man with a gun takes on a whole new meeting, you know, and then there's, the, one of the issues that I've said before is that, you know, I've got gang members out there that haven't been arrested, I got gang members that, you know, are, are real gang members and are causing problems but haven't been arrested or convicted. If they've got a gun, they get to keep it, can't do anything about that. So it, you know, it's a, it's a, it is, it's a, it's a problem, it's a huge enforcement problem, so I don't support it.
And the department wouldn't support it?
Pardon?
You don't support it personally, and the department would be against it?
The department?
Yeah.
Well, I-
I'll dispose until the department.
I speak for the department, I don't speak for the FOP, I don't speak for every individual officer, because that, not everybody's going to agree with me, but I, yeah, in general, the department, yeah, do not support it, and I don't know how most officers could support it, because it does make their job a lot more hard, harder, and a lot more dangerous, a lot more dangerous, you know, it's just, it's-
Well, let me ask it this way, are there, are you aware of any law enforcement entity that is in favor of it?
I, I, no, I do not. OACP, I'm not really sure what the Oklahoma Association of State Police, what their stance on it is, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that they would oppose it too, I think most agencies would oppose it.
Okay. So third question is, in the next, in the next year, well, you have kind of an unusual situation in 2017, that you have a, a general obligation bond coming up, and then you have MAPS, the MAPS program expiring, so these two large capital expenditure programs coming to a head at the same time. And much of the study, much of the decision-making, much of the list of projects would be done in the next year before we hear from you in this setting again. What would you, what would you identify as, as the biggest needs for the department in those, in those, if we were to, to try and address public safety issues for the police department in a MAPS program and a GEO bond, what would be the highest priority?
Well, for the GEO, for the GEO, for the GEO bond, you know, we've already talked about that, the city manager, we've talked, these issues about a new training, police fire training center is, I think is pretty critical, we, we really need to, we really need to develop that and build that, and I would like to see that in the next GEO bond, and I think the city manager has, has also said the same thing. So, you know, that, that's, that's probably the biggest project. Now, vehicles and things like that, I don't think have ever been, have ever been funded, it's funded now to use tax, I can't remember the exact date when that comes up, but I don't know if that's a possibility, but cars are obviously going to be an issue in the future, but-
Cars, again, a capital funding source for cars is an issue, we've never issued GEO debt for cars because of the short life of the cars.
Yeah.
What, what about the radio system?
Uh, radio systems, I, the, the, the radio, the radio systems that we built are off our special police safe, public safety sales taxes, and our radio system we have now are continuing, I mean, there's, there's going to be funds that are going to be needed to upgrade those systems, but I'm not sure, I, I assume that a bond could, that could be in a bond, but again, I have not had those discussions with, with the city manager or any other manager.
Is there anything that we need to do in the next year in terms of studies to get us ready for?
We're working on, we're, we're working on the training center to determine, you know, where, where we probably would like to have it, where we'd like to put it, the size of the training center, and what the cost is going to be to include in the next bond.
Okay. Councilman, if I can respond to a couple of those, we're, we're doing a study, we've got an architect to assist us in our, a needs analysis of a training study for both police departments. Radio system is an issue, we're looking at various funding sources for that, Craig Freeman's our image plugger, and this is Doug, to come up with what is the best solution for that. At least purchase on it, whether we make it part of a, a, a future capital program, we don't have the answers right now, we've got an RFP that's going out to see, help us identify what the cost is going to be on that, and so we will be doing something, certainly an item we've talked about in the last couple of years anyway, in our budget workshop, that's, that's upcoming, and we do need to come up with a solution for that.
When, when would the RFP go out?
Did it go out already, or is it, it's about to? Like last week?
Okay.
Very timeline.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Just a quick, Chief, you did say that we have more officers today than we've ever had.
Yes.
And so there's, every now and then I hear some confusion that there aren't as many on the street, but my understanding of that is because we've targeted more officers to your specific programming in gang investigation and hot teams and all these various programs that are a little more focused on direct action, is that my correct answer and the correct understanding?
Right, that's correct, and you have to look, if you, if I assign two people to a hot team, that really, that's proactive, and I, it's, it's, it has done a lot to keep from officers having to get calls to, to somebody that's homeless or in need of help and things like that, because it's been so proactive. So when you dedicate somebody to those types of things, it, it does relieve some of those calls for service, you know, off those officers now. You know, we do have more officers on the, on the streets, but the one, the reason, one reason I pointed out that, our calls for service are going up. You know, our, you know, it's, the city's continuing to grow, calls for service are going up, our, our downtown central area is growing with more residential, we've added officers over the years to address that, but we haven't quite some time, so we're going to have, we'll have to start looking at that, because we'll have to have more of a presence in expanding the west, the west end, close to our headquarters, and it's all good stuff, it's just, you know, we have to be able to, be able to think about providing services and some, or just more visibility in many cases, because we have more residents downtown.
I'm really impressed by the pace at which we implemented the body camera program, and I was just wondering if you could explain to the public a little bit about the public, or the policies and procedures, especially, I'd like to know a little bit about the open records request and what we did there as far as policies and procedures are concerned.
Right, once, once we, once we started the process, I mean, we don't, we don't ever implement anything, we won't have a, a body worn camera program, we won't have a taser program, we won't carry firearms without policies and procedures to regulate those. There are a lot of agencies across the country that did do that, and went in and just put them out there, but nothing to tell the officers how to use them. So we have to have policies and procedures in place, so we started working on those, and once we started working on those, we realized a difficulty in that sometimes state law, state law was conflicting between what the, the current open records was and what maybe we should be videoing, what we should or should not be videoing, like in hospitals and those types of things. So we realized that there was, there was quite a few things that probably needed to be changed in state law. We had those conversations with District Attorney Prater, Prater took a pretty hard stance and helped support us getting, getting some new open records language written last year, and all, kudos to Ed Hasbrook, he wrote it all, he wrote most of it and did a brilliant job of working through that, and then obviously, and then Senator Holt really was very, very helpful in trying to, to help us rewrite that, to get it through out there, so, you know, it was, it was a fairly long and, you know, it was a lot easier process than I thought it would be, but once we did that, we weren't putting the cameras in place until we had, had the, the open records bill, our open records law changed, and then also our policies and procedures, once we did that, we had a working group with officers, different, different levels of officers, we had several FOP members on that group to, to help create those, those procedures. So once we did that, the RFP, during the same time, the RFP went out to, to vendors, and then we went through that process and chose the vendor we did, so. It was, it was, it was a lengthy process, but we, we have to make sure we do it right, and we have to make sure officers are using them correctly, and-
I'm very impressed, thanks.
Thank you.
The, I appreciate your comments on this procedural justice thing, it's been an ongoing project with, that I've been involved in through the Judiciary Committee and the municipal court staff and the city attorney's office for quite some time, and I, I had, we had a meeting, a Judiciary Committee meeting recently at, at your conference room there in the, on the first floor, and I, it's the first time I realized the depth of input that OCPD had in that program. It's, and I appreciate it, it's, it's, it's a program that needs to be done, your reference to Ferguson is, is extremely important in terms of, we don't want to get caught in that situation, that, that was a tragic situation that could have been prevented with, with some more positive action, and I think we've taken those actions in Oklahoma City, or to the extent we haven't, we're, we're certainly on the way to doing that, and your, your support personally and the, and the department's support for the assist program that is currently in, 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 working at, with, through the municipal court system is very much appreciated. I mean, there's so many benefits from that, not the least of which is driving down the cost of incarceration, but, and I appreciate it. I also appreciate your comments about the, the cadet program, I've long been an advocate for the reinvigoration of that program, because I think it is a pipeline to the very people that we'd like to see on the police department. I, I can envision a day when the police department looks like Oklahoma City, rather than looks like me and you, and, and I appreciate that, all the work, hard work to try to make that happen, that's not easy, and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I've heard Sergeant Doherty say over and over again that, you know, who better to interact with intercity community than the people that come from it, and that's what we're hoping to accomplish.
It has to have a positive outcome on the children that are involved in it. If nothing else, it's, that's a number of, of kids that are, that have learned the value of volunteering and learned the, and learned the value of, of police officers, I mean, if that's all that happens from it, it's worth doing, and if it eventually causes us to have a more representative police department, that's even better, but I appreciate your hard work in making that happen. I know your staff is the people that actually down where the rubber meets the road, but I, I know they wouldn't be doing that if you weren't involved in it, so, and I appreciate it.
And I share Councilman White's comments, the cadet program has definitely been great for the minority community, and of course, as you know, Chief, I'm somewhat involved in the cadet program, and so it's definitely good to see young minorities being involved in, looking into law enforcement as a career, and to know that a cadet program is going to happen at Douglas, which is outstanding, and, and some of the other things that you all are doing, in reference to expanding the cadet program across the city, I think speaks volumes to your leadership, and also the leadership of Sergeant Tomals and several of the other police staff who have been working the, the process. Also, I, I do share the comments about the procedural justice, thank you for, for talking about it, and not only talking about it, but forming a plan to actually deal with procedural justice, and thank you for your, your, your leadership. The community meetings, the, the community town halls have been great, I, I thank you for reaching out to the minority community. For those who don't know, Chief and I, we've done plenty of community meetings together, radio shows and TV interviews together, but thank you for your, your, your leadership.
Thank you. And I just, I have to, you know, I appreciate that, and I'll tell you what, I've got, I'm blessed, I got the best staff from top to bottom, my deputy chiefs, majors, just, we're, we're in great shape for the future of this police department.
Hey, real quick, thank you, Chief, for your presentation. From an overview, what I've heard you say, one of the things I heard you say is that the requirements for calls for service are going up. Is that, am I on right?
Yeah, the number of calls for service went up this, this last year.
And, and our, and our population is growing, is, is going up?
Yes.
And yet, we are, we are going to have to cut back on some of our overtime because of this financial situation, and we also have a number of vacant positions that we're not going to be able to fill.
Right, there's forty-eight positions that are frozen for the next fiscal year.
Now, given, given that scenario, what, how concerned should we be that the public safety delivery of service to our citizens will continue to be adequate? That's a word on those first slides that you used. How concerned should we be about being able to supply adequate public service?
Well, I, I've done a couple of interviews this week, and my comments have been not too concerned, I mean, it obviously, you know, it sets us back a little bit, but we're, we're confident we can, we can still provide the service that we have been providing, and my other comment was, as long as it doesn't get worse the next year. Now, the, the next year, then I, I would worry more about actually service being impacted.
But, but the Chief did say that he's got the most number of officers on the street that he's ever-
That's right, yeah.
All right, Chief, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Next up is the Fire Department and our Chief, Keith Bryan.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Pleasure to be here this morning to discuss with you our proposed 2017 budget presentation. And while we're getting the program up and you're turning to page C111 of your budget book, if you have it there with you, I'd like to introduce my staff very quickly. Running the program for us this morning is our business manager, Clint Rigor, and back there, Deputy Chief Richard Kelly, who's over our operations division, as well as Deputy Chief Kelly Sawyer, who's also our Fire Marshal for the city and over fire prevention services. The mission of the Fire Department is to provide emergency response, fire prevention, and public education services to the Oklahoma City community so they can have their lives and property protected, and we're doing that by responding quickly, safely, courteously, meeting the needs of our citizens in a variety of ways. Our major issues and strategic results, somewhat similar to those that you've heard in years past, but the lack of awareness and the application of personal safety measures by residents will result in fire fatalities, injuries, and property loss. So the results that we want to shoot for and, and try and realize is that by 2018, each year, the structure of fire fatality rate in Oklahoma City will be at or below the national average, which is 1.01 per 100,000 residents, we'll speak more about that here in just a few minutes. Also, by 2018, that community will benefit from a comprehensive fire safety and prevention program, as evidenced by 100% of elementary public schools in Oklahoma City limits receiving second-grade fire safety presentation each year. And we also want to reach out to our citizens and do 50,000 non-emergency safety activities involving the community of Oklahoma City, and we do that in a variety of ways. Those non-emergency type of activities include citizen CPR training, home safety drills or exit drills, fire extinguisher training. Obviously, our Project Live program is ongoing, where we not only raise money to purchase and have a cache of smoke alarms, but we issue those to citizens free of charge, and here recently, where we used to issue them if that's all they wanted, or if they also wanted, we would install those, now we don't give them the choice, we go out and install those to make sure that they're, they're properly installed. Show you this graph, and back to the structured fire fatality data, as you can see there in the current year, we're currently at nine fatalities. That figure that I gave you, that national average that I spoke of earlier, for us would be about six fatalities per year to that 1.01. Obviously, we want zero, and that's what we're working toward, but just for perspective's sake, it doesn't, or overall, if you took it over a ten-year or so average, we're, we're down. You know, we, we want that to be as low as possible, but you can see it doesn't take very many to, to, to raise that average. Moving on with the additional issues and results, that population growth, development, changing demographics, coupled with our increasing role in emergency medical services delivery, will lead to growing demand on our sur- will lead to growing demand on our services that we provide, and demand on our resources, which if we don't address those, could result in increased response time, leading to higher levels of property loss, deterioration of patient condition, increasing delays in, in delivering other services. So by 2018, each year, the citizens of Oklahoma City, even anticipating growth in the outlying areas, which we're still seeing, will receive emergency response within seven minutes, 70% of the time, in order to protect their lives, assess, and treat medical emergencies, and limit damage to property and the environment. Couple of points on that. As you know, we, we, we continue on with our advanced life, excuse me, advanced life support program. We're currently at 31 of our engines, 31 of our engines are advanced life support capable. We'll go to 32 by the end of this month, and that will only leave five left. So, still making progress in that area and hope to be 100% for too much longer. The next issue, that a growing number of fire department facilities do not meet the needs of a modern fire service and the funding source for fleet replacement expires in 2018. If not addressed, that could result in increased facility maintenance costs and a diversion of resources from direct services to the public. So our result, our strategic result is that by 2018, that our annual fleet replacement needs and facility improvement needs will have an identified funding source. We've mentioned this before, but we are complete with our facilities assessment that we had a consultant do for us. It's, it's fairly exhaustive. It identified several needs in each of our facilities. Probably the best news from it was that in the category of stations that need to be replaced, there was only about two or three that, that made that list. But several needs in each of our facilities and we want to, again, we're prioritizing those right now so that we know what to work on first. And certainly, we would want to work with city leadership to identify a funding source for both of those issues, fleet replacement and address those facility needs. Our major budget changes for the upcoming fiscal year in the general fund is that we would hold 21 positions vacant for the southeast Oklahoma City Fire Station 29 for reduction or a, a cost of $1.8 million. Want to make it clear, that's for the staffing for that proposed station that was going to be built in the southeast part of the city. Obviously not something that we wanted to do, obviously something that we were working toward in terms of not only our general obligation bond projects, but to improve our, our service delivery in that area. That's, I want to make it clear, that's not a decrease in any way in our current service delivery. That was going to be an addition or an enhancement for that area out there. We won't be able to realize that at this time, but we'll hold hiring those 21 positions for that project until things improve. As you heard earlier, we're proposing to delete nine dispatch positions to consolidate public safety communications for a little over $1 million. That's something that we, we brought to council before, even when it wasn't a, a financial issue in terms of efficiency. Obviously, that with, with all dispatch functions happening over in the public communications, public safety communications center, that's something that we, that we believe we can gain some efficiency in. So we want to eliminate nine of our current 18 dispatchers. We want to give those call-taking duties to 911 under the police department, as Chief City mentioned earlier. They would have to hire a few additional positions to do that call-taking, but it would be a net reduction in, in overall positions. We're also proposing to delete two corporal positions at a cost of $235,000 and increase various line items for a cost of $157,000. Under the fire sales tax, we want to remove budget-related items that completed, that have to do with completed sales tax projects. Before I move on from this, too, again, that station out in the southeast part of the city, Station 29, was a 2007 bond project. We also had some re, two rebuilds, Station 21 at Southwest 29th and Independence, Station 23 at Southeast 29th and Eastern. We just moved station, we already had plans to rebuild Station 21. We're going to move Station 20, rebuild of Station 23 up in the schedule, so we're going to go ahead and start that project and, again, delay the project out for southeast. Next slide is organizational chart. I know that's a little bit busy and you have it there in your book. The thing I would probably point out to you and bring your attention to is that upper, upper right-hand corner, the black box there that gives our total positions for this upcoming year's budget. 966 uniform, 31 civilian, for a total of 997 total positions. Our funding by source, obviously the general fund being the majority of that, $93 million, funds 789 positions. Next to that is the Public Safety Fire Sales Tax Fund at $44 million and, and funds 208 positions. And then the MAPS Through Use Tax, a little over $18 million, and that's all for fleet Under the individual lines of business or divisions of the fire department, under Fire Prevention Services, again supervised by Deputy Chief Kelly Sawyer, she has three work sections within that division. Fire Investigations has a budget of one point, proposed budget of $1.7 million and 13 positions. Fire Prevention and Code Enforcement or Code Compliance, $2.2 million and 17 positions. And then our Public Safety Education Work Section, budgeted at $1.2 million with 10 Some of the key measures within that division, the percentage of new construction inspections completed within three business days of request, we're currently at 94%. And you can see they're kind of shaded or faded. Our target is 75%, so we're doing well in that regard. The percentage of arson cases referred to the district attorney's office for prosecution, we're currently at 36%. Again, Chief City mentioned that as being one of the highest rates in the nation. Our target's 21%, so we're well above that. Smoke alarms distributed to citizens, our target was 2,500 and we're currently at 28, and so we're doing well in that regard. And that's due to the efforts of our Project Life that we have ongoing. And the number of second-grade students receiving fire safety education in the Oklahoma City Limits. Don't know if you've ever seen it, but this is actually the fire, we call the Fire Safety Education trailer. It's a, it's a big trailer we take around. It's a mock-up of a residential structure, a house. So we take the, the students in there and actually show them about getting out of a house, how to be safe in the kitchen and, and things of that nature. Our target was 6,824 and we were at 6,734. Again, sometimes due to weather issues and when those schedules are worked out, we, but we, we usually get to all of them. And the Support Services line of business or division, Chief Goodwin is out of town this morning, couldn't be with us. But the two work sections under Support Services or Fire Dispatch, a budget of $1.2 million and 10, 10 positions, and that reflects the nine that we're proposing to delete. Fire Maintenance, that's both fleet and facilities, with a budget of $10 million, $10.8 million, 17 positions in that work section. Their key performance measures is the percentage of 911 telephone calls answered within 15 minutes or less from transfer from the police department to Fire Dispatch. Our target's 90%. We're doing that currently right now, 91% of the time. Percentage of Fire Dispatcher incidents dispatched in one minute, so that by the time they get that call and then they have the information and they pass that information on to the respective station and unit, our target is 90%. We're currently at 74. Total Fire Department incidents dispatched, our target was 75,600, 75,600. We've currently at 73,906. Percentage of frontline fleet available, we're at 91%, our target being 90. Percentage of total maintenance hours that are scheduled, 83%. Our target is 60%. And the number of repairs outsourced, our target is 15%. We're 11, so we want that to be a lot lower than that target. That means that our maintenance personnel are keeping up with the demand on their work, work orders. Under the Operational Services line of business and division, Deputy Chief Richard Kelly over that. It's broken down into two main work sections, Emergency Medical Services, you can see the budget for that, $90 million, 728 positions. Fire Suppression Operations, $18 million, 161 positions. Just to make sure everybody understands that, that doesn't mean there's separate people in each of those work sections. That's all of our firefighters out there at the station. But when we break them, break their time down, where they spend that in emergency, delivering emergency medical services and firefighting, that's how that breaks out, according to their time spent in each of those activities. Their key performance measures are the percentage of emergency medical services responses provided with advanced life support, staff and equipment, which is, again, our, our paramedic level, personnel and equipment. Our target is 85% and we're, we're doing that at 87% right now. So the majority of the emergency medical responses that we are responding to are responded to by a paramedic that has the advanced training and the advanced equipment. So we're providing that, a higher level of service, 87% of the time. The number of emergency medical responses total, we anticipated 62,000. We're currently at 51,864. A percentage of fire incident responses under five minutes is currently at 56%. Our target is, as we said earlier, is at 70%. Percentage of structured fires contained to the room of origin, our target is 65%. We're currently at 53. And the number of total fire responses, we anticipated 3,100 and we're at 29,08. A little bit more on response times. As you can see there, the, from the past two previous years, again, our, our target's 70%. We're making a little improvement. Again, all responses, we're at 65% within seven minutes. We break that down into fire responses, it goes to 56%. And emergency medical within five minutes, again, that takes the dispatch piece out of it. That's just the response time from the station to the location, and we're currently at 61%. Although they continue to fluctuate in, in basically the same range, we're showing a little improvement, taking some internal measures. One, we've actually, we can look at the individual, what we refer to as out-of-shoot time, from the time they receive the dispatch to the time they have wheels rolling by the individual unit on the specific shift. So if we can see some things that aren't acceptable, we can address that with, with those individuals. Same thing in dispatch. We, we can now look at the individual dispatcher's time it takes them, once they have the call transferred from 911 until they actually complete that dispatch process. So we can do some training, some counseling, whatever needs to be done to make sure that they're doing that. And so we've got a little improvement in that way, but we're still staying in that same range. I want to go back to a few months ago when we discussed response times when I was making a presentation on our leading-for results measures. We're still working with IT and we're looking at the outlying areas specifically of the city where we have people that are more than five miles away from the closest fire station. We're trying to break those responses out and, and do a comparison of within five miles and outside of five miles to see what the, the difference is there. We may have to break those out and start reporting those separately. I suspect, I'm not ready to concede totally yet, that we've done everything internally that we can do, but I, I suspect that we're going to have to look at that in the future and maybe have some different measure for those longer responses in, in the outlying areas of the city. Some additional information I'd like to pass on to you, the, with the implementation of our Target Solutions Platform, we're seeing some really good improvements in, in standardizing our training process across the department, records retention and documentation of activities and that, from apparatus checks in the morning to policies that we can put out via this way, instead of kind of the old way of distributing them via the battalion chiefs and so forth, we're seeing some, a lot of improvement there. Mentioned the, the rebuilds of Station 21 and 23 earlier. Those went out to bid last week. You approved that to go out to bid, and so we'll be awarding those contracts in the coming weeks. We're doing a little project there in front of headquarters, there's a fallen firefighter memorial. We, we have one there now, but we're, it's kind of tucked back in a corner. We're moving that out to a little bit more prominent, visible place, and we're also going to add some public art with that to kind of spruce up the look of our, our administration building. As I mentioned earlier, our priorities for the next bond authorization are going to be fleet replacement and facility improvements. Here and over the last year, not only do we have a good citizen CPR program that's been ongoing now for a long time, we started one here within the city. We were training all city employees, making sure that all city employees, regardless of department or where they work in the city, that are trained in CPR and be a part of a new employee orientation and training for our new city employees. So, again, we're not always everywhere where we need to be at that moment. And evidently, you know, to have all of our city employees trained that way, that are out there doing street repairs or working in parks or so forth, I think it'd be a, a very good thing. Mentioned that right now. I know Steve's sitting back here, but we received word here not too long ago that for 2014, our cardiac arrest survival rate was a little over 38%, which again is, is very good in terms of what you see out there across the nation. So, I think in a large part, it, it is for those programs where we, we train our citizens in CPR. I wanted to mention while I'm up here and had the opportunity, this August, I will complete my tenure as an elected officer with the International Association of Fire Chiefs. And, uh, last year was my term as president, but I, I want to thank everyone for the commitment that the city made to me to allow me to do that. Mr. Couch was nothing but supportive from the, from the get-go, him and Chief Barry. And you all were very supportive and encouraging me in that role, and it was, it was a pleasure and an honor for me to represent the city in that regard and a wonderful experience. And obviously, my department supported me, the locals supported me. So again, nothing but support and encouragement, and I certainly appreciate being allowed to have that experience, but, and hope I did a good job.
Chief, we were really proud to have you represent us. That was, four years is a long time to serve in that kind of a capacity.
It was a great experience. It's okay that it's over now.
Thank you for being willing to take it on and represent Oklahoma City in such a fine way.
It was only the, in 150 years of that association, I'm only the second chief from Oklahoma City to serve as president. This is a high honor. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Couple of questions. You mentioned fleet and facility replacement on several occasions, and you also mentioned this consultant's report that looked at your department and looked at the needs of the department. Are there other relevant, important things that we need to know about that stand out in your mind besides just the fleet and facility replacement issues?
Well, in, in terms of what our needs are, again, we have some additional stations as part of the 2007 bond issue that we'll continue to work on and work toward. So not only the, the Station 29 out southeast, but we have another one out far southwest that we'll have to do in the future as well. So we're going to, you know, obviously still be working toward that. But again, in, in terms of immediate things, and what we would put priority on is our facilities to bring them up and do the necessary repairs, remodels that need to be done to make sure that they're, you know, livable and, and functional the way they should be. And also with our current funding source for fleet about to run out next year, that's something I think that we have to put a high priority on. We don't replace fire apparatus as quickly as that we replace a police car, as Chief City mentioned earlier. You know, a fire engine, for example, we probably get anywhere from nine to 11 years out of that. A ladder or an aerial ladder apparatus, maybe a year or two longer than that. So, that's our cycle and we're, we're doing, we've done pretty well over that the past several years, but with that funding source, that specific funding source running out, we need to, we need to look at a new. to, we need to look at a new source.
And training facility?
Excuse me?
And training facility?
Yes, sir. I mean, Chief City mentioned that. We've certainly put a high priority on that. I would hope it would be its own issue on the bond initiative, and that way we could also look at the current, our current facilities kind of in a separate light. But certainly, I think we've outgrown our training facility out there. The location, I don't think serves us well, very well anymore, and so we're, as Chief City mentioned and Mr. Couch mentioned, we're looking at that right now and hopefully plan for that.
You commented earlier about the statistic that I've always found kind of difficult to apply it, and that's the number of residential fire deaths. And your comment was, you know, one or two deaths make a whole lot of difference in that number. I mean, is there, but is there a pattern to it? Does, is it, is there, it almost seems to me it's very difficult for us to control it. I mean, one apartment fire that kills two or three people, you're off the chart. I mean, you can't, no matter what effort you've made, that statistic is going to go against you if just one incident can cause that.
The fire is more difficult to control, obviously. Again, a lot of that has to do with human behavior, which we can't control. The fatality aspect of that, the common thread to that is lack of a working smoke alarm in almost every case. When people could not get out quick enough, it was due to lack of a working smoke alarm, and that's why we place such a high emphasis on our Project Life program to make sure that every residential property, be it an apartment, home, what have you, has a working smoke alarm in it. What we don't report, and what, it's hard to capture, really are the lives that are saved by that technology.
Right.
You know, the people that did get out will tell us. I heard the smoke alarm go off. I had plenty of time to get out. That's the good news part of that, and that happens all the time.
Is it more frequently that it happens in, it seems to be, I prefaced it by that, is it more frequently happening in lower-income, older, less substantial residences?
Typically, and I'd probably say more poorly or inadequately maintained homes.
Right. Okay. Well, I guess the only, I mean, you've answered the question in the.
Rental property, those types of things, you know, where they may not keep up with what they need to have.
Is it, is there a requirement that a residential home have a smoke alarm?
On new residential, so if it's a.
Would it be helpful if we?
Chief.
Of course, it'd take manpower to do it, but would it be helpful if we changed it to every home must have a working smoke alarm?
We could do that.
Enforcement part of it might be.
Yeah.
But, you know, we've done that on other things before. I mean, the state had a seatbelt law a long time before there was any way to enforce it. We passed the smoking ordinance with no real kind of a bully pulpit thing. I think maybe that's something we ought to consider, just consider passing it and recognizing the difficulty in enforcement, but just the public pressure of saying you're supposed to have one.
Right.
I mean, it might be enforceable, say, against landlords. I mean, we might be able to do it in rental facilities some way. That's something maybe we could talk about later. It seems to me that might be a way to do it.
We do do that with rental properties, and I know apartments, we do a lot of canvassing in apartment complexes to make sure that they're keeping.
Well, why don't we just, if we could just get a report back if there are things, what the ways we could expand that.
I can get you a full report on where we're at with, again, apartments, things of that nature, and where we believe we're at. You know, that's one of the things that we ask in our citizen survey that we do, if you do have a working smoke alarm.
Right.
So we have some data on that. Yes, sir.
Ed?
I had a couple of, I just want, they're just compliments. I wanted to compliment you on the ALS expansion. That's something, again, you and I have had lots of conversations about, and I think it makes a difference. It's just, it is, I appreciate, you're down to five stations now that's all that's left that do not have ALS.
Correct.
Is that right? That's great. I don't know where we were when we started this discourse about it, but we sure had a lot more than five that didn't have them. I know, that's true. The other thing is I want to, I want to compliment you and the union leadership and the city manager's office on the reasonable discourse that went on with regard to postponing the southeast fire station. That could easily have gotten into a battle with the union concerning the positions. You could have gotten in a battle with me over the provincial, I want my fire station. None of that happened, and I just think that's a very, I want to make sure that you know how much I personally appreciated the way that was handled. I mean, it was the right thing to do. The economic situation dictated it, and everybody stepped up and said, we can do that. And it made my life a lot simpler that everybody, that we didn't have people out there waving the flag screaming about it. It was necessary, and I want to personally thank you, and I see the union leadership in the back. The, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate it.
I'm sure you feel it a few calls yourself, so I appreciate your help with it as well.
Ed? In that study that was done on the facilities, what were the cost estimates? If there's a range or? If you did, if you did everything, that they, all recommendations?
Yeah. Right.
Chief, restate that.
Excuse me?
Restate that. He wasn't.
They put it at current cost of what they believed it would do, and as Clint said, it was probably somewhere in the eight to ten million dollar range if we addressed every item on that. Some of those things, obviously, we could do in-house. We wouldn't have to hire somebody to do or whatever. So again, that's why we're going through that and prioritizing that. Some of those things we need to do right away whether or not, you know, there's some, it's a bond issue or not.
No, but, so we're talking about renovations to fire stations?
Correct.
So eight to ten million would get?
That was if we addressed every item that was identified in that study.
Okay.
Some of those, you could probably make an argument, are, wouldn't even be necessary, but it's just the things that the consultant identified. So that's why we're going through it now internally, not only prioritizing, but what would be really necessary or not. Right. And then again, it did recommend two stations to be completely rebuilt, which, that surprised me. I thought they would come back and recommend more than that be rebuilt.
Okay. And the cost for the fleet, what are we spending on fleet replacement, or what kind of funding amount would we need for that in twenty-eight?
Well, this year's like eighteen, yeah, about five million a year, each year of the, yeah.
It's about ten million dollars a year is what we spend on total public safety.
We put some off last year, and we're kind of catching back up this year, and that's why it's probably a little bit higher than that average, but on average, yeah.
It depends. It's not a, we try to keep it a level, plain flow, but, you know, as you mentioned earlier, his ladder trucks are real expensive.
Right.
And Chief City's helicopters are real, real expensive.
Okay. What about, what's a ballpark figure of what a training facility might cost?
Oh, my goodness.
Just a range, a wide range?
Yeah, it's really difficult because, I mean, do we need a, do we need a training, a driving course in there, or can we use somebody else's driving course in there? So we've got some decisions that are yet to be, yet to be made on that. There's a, there's some real ranges of where it could be, but I think the preliminary report was in the twenty, thirty million dollar range.
Correct. Thirty is what stood out in my mind, yes, sir.
I always remember the lower numbers.
I know.
Okay. And the radio system, what was the range of a radio system?
You know, we'll know that better when we get the RFPs that come in. I think we're, Craig's saying twenty, I'm thinking fifteen.
So fifteen to twenty, okay. What, I'm not clear what's happening with the dispatch. Can you explain, how are we changing dispatch and with police and?
Well, what we're proposing, our dispatchers sit in the same room, same facility, as police dispatchers and nine-one-one call takers. They're all right there together. When a nine-one-one call comes in, obviously, a nine-one-one operator picks it up and asks the question, do you need police, fire, or medical? Depending on what the caller says. If it's a police call, then a police dispatcher would get that, or they would, nine-one-one call taker would process the call and kick it over to a, or transfer it to a police dispatcher. In our case, if they say fire, they just transfer that caller immediately to our fire dispatchers. Same thing if they said, I need, it's medical related. They would transfer that caller directly to IMSA dispatchers. So there's some transfer going on there that may not need to happen. I think it's, there's an efficiency to be gained with the nine-one-one call takers actually taking our call, the information from the caller on a fire. That eliminates that person being transferred over, and the first thing our dispatchers do would be to take all the information down, that type of thing. So once they get that call from nine-one-one, they can immediately dispatch. The time, there's a, you know, it's seconds, but there's time lost in that transfer process. Again.
I think the big, you know, one of the largest issues is the work schedule. You've got people doing similar tasks, working significantly different work schedules. You've got people that are working shifts, with twenty-four hour shifts with the fire dispatch, and they're not doing that with the rest of the dispatchers.
So we're cutting fire dispatch positions?
And adding back.
And adding back police positions that would be call takers, to do the call-taking part of that function for us.
So they will be in the police department, but civilian.
And the fire dispatchers could go back to other stations, or what happens?
All of our, all of our fire, our dispatchers, with the exception of one, were trained, experienced firefighters working at a fire station, and because of our collecting bargaining agreement allows them to do that, when a dispatch position opened up, they would apply for it. So in almost every case over there currently, we could put that trained firefighter back out at a station doing firefighting and EMS work. There may be a few exceptions to that, that we would have to discuss that with the union.
What's happening with Level Zero, the amount of Level Zero?
It's slowed down to almost nothing now.
Okay.
So a very good improvement on that since the last time we discussed that last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up is the IT Department, and Shad Meldrum is here.
Good morning. My name's Shad Meldrum, the IT Director. This is Carla Jack. She's on our admin team, and she's doing her part to deliver a thunderwind tonight, So I'll present the IT budget. Next page, please. Starting with LFR, our mission statement, the mission of the Information Technology Department is to provide business solutions and technology services at city departments so they can better serve the Oklahoma City community. The screenshot there is of the internal budget and LFR management app, which is distributed through all departments. We developed that internally to facilitate that process and improve efficiency there. Next slide. This is our IT department structure. After budget cuts, we'll be at one hundred positions for next year. That shows in general how we're aligned. We have five lines of business, and I'll note here, one of our position cuts was a division manager, so we'll have three division managers. They're not here today, they're at other meetings. So our division managers are Kerry Wagman, Stacy Shinsky, and Ralph Gibson, and our assistant director is David Grothie, so we have five lines of business reporting to three division managers. Next. This shows our breakdown by line of business of the IT budget, which is just over twenty-five million dollars for next year. The two top ones there, infrastructure and public safety support, are just because of the volume of stuff being taken care of within those two lines of business. And application support, enhancements at one point five, our customer support line of business. And then last is administration, which is similar to city manager's office. This is where everything falls, so all of our contingency and everything falls there. So eighty-two percent of that four million dollars is for all those extra items. Next. So major budget changes for next year. We are deleting four positions to meet the required budget cut. All those positions within IT were currently vacant, so that affected the programs of departmental systems, which take care of applications, customer support, network, and of course, the division manager, which I talked about. So that totaled three hundred and twenty-one million dollars. Next, to meet the nine-hundred-and-fifty-three, we found six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, among other things. I'll note here that about twenty percent of cuttable items within IT or was included in our cut are not cuttable, and those are for things like nine-one-one, nine-one-one CAD and the PSCC. Those are items which are not capable of being cut, so we had to seek other places to reduce. To meet this cut, we looked at, we have dollars in the IT budget to get external support from vendors to do things like network and some CCTV repair. So what we did on those is look to do more of that internally, which will take more time to do, but we think we have some internal capacity to do some of that. Basically, we went through and cut everything to the bare bones as best we could, even to the extent of cutting our own IT training budget by half for next year, so there'll be some impacts on that for training staff. Required operational increases, which of course we have contracts for maintenance of applications and stuff, but that had been going up by two-point-six or three percent the last couple of years. It went up one-point-eight percent this year, so that was good. And then we are adding assistance support specialists to position within our server team to do some stuff for the utilities department they want to do with their SCADA system and security functions in that area. Next. This is our breakdown of our charge-back work. Of course, we're an internal service department, so charging back to the other departments, this is how it breaks down. You can see between police, fire, and courts, which would be the public safety area, that is fifty-three percent of our budget is for functions for them. The next two departments, utilities and public works, are fourteen and nine percent, but that of just those departments is three-quarters of our charge-back to departments, so everybody else gets a piece of what's left, and time-wise, it's similar for this breakdown. Next. Strategic issues from LFR, I'll just list them. System security and data integrity is something where, is number one. This isn't necessarily in priority order, but that is one of the highest priorities for us. Growing demand for technology services. Departments continue to want to do more and more things. Realizing business process improvements, this is something we worry about, is we put in a piece of software, of course, they're upgraded, and then we, a lot of times, don't have the staff to come back. We upgrade the software, look for new opportunities with that upgrade to do a new thing. So departments will do the upgrade to get them there, because that may be required by the vendor, but a lot of times we don't have a chance to come back and look at new opportunities. So we do that as best we can with the resources we have. Operational funding and resources, and then the last one, advanced skill sets, which, like I said, technology's changing all the time, so we continue, we just have to train our staff to maintain the stuff, and our IT training budget is something we cut pretty heavily for this next year to meet the requirements. The project workload versus capacity, this is straight out of LFR, and I know that's a busy chart, but what I wanted to show there, this is something, when we did our last LFR review two years ago, we added in because we felt like we were showing the day-to-day work that was going on, but we didn't have anything in LFR that was showing what departments were asking to have done that we may not necessarily have the resources to do. So this shows that workload on the teams, and this is project workload. So a hundred percent is what the teams can do and what is a reasonable amount of time for departments. So anything above that is where there's more demands on those teams than they're able to meet. You can see within data management and development, they're way over capacity for the resources we have, so we have lots of projects building up on those teams that we're not able to do for departments. I'll note there, nine of the fourteen programs are above a hundred-and-twenty percent, and five of those nine are above a hundred percent, a hundred-and-fifty percent capacity. Next. So going into our lines of business now, our first one is customer support. They provide a single point of contact for customer technical support needs and rapid restoration, normal services. So this program set up years ago so that the people in departments that had an issue didn't have to know who to call, because they got a problem with their computer, they don't know, is it a network, is it a server, something wrong with the database? So this is where they call to get supports. They call this one number, and that gets them access to fourteen programs. These people will take their call. A lot of stuff they've been trained to resolve, the high-frequency issues that come in, the staff here on customer support can resolve those without impacting the team behind the scenes. But regardless, if it is a bigger issue, they'll go ahead and forward that to that team and make sure it gets done in a reasonable amount of time. So they themselves have done about forty-seven hundred. So they themselves have done about 4,700 work requests. That'll be the estimate for the end of this year. Uh, they directly manage 1,500 computing devices, so they don't just take calls, they're out there doing desktop replacements and that kind of stuff, so they have projects also. Uh, they manage over 1,100 cell phones, and there's 1,300 cellular data modems. Remember, we got cellular data modems. And the police cars and traffic signals, this is more and more how we're getting, you know, we're doing some of the irrigation stuff with parks out there with Verizon wireless modem, so more and more, we're doing that kind of stuff. So they manage the bills and make sure everything gets paid correctly, make sure we get the best price from these cellular companies, which is a, a bear to, to manage that. Uh, next slide. Uh, looking at LFR for customer support, what I wanted to highlight there is that, uh, when we do day-to-day business, the, the customers will get a feedback opportunity, and one thing that's critical to us is knowing how good we're doing, is getting feedback on timeliness and quality. The customer support program reports for the entire department as a whole, so they'll just report their stuff. This is the summary of the entire department. You can see there for FY '16, we're going to be at 96%. So feedback from departments on our day-to-day operations is very good. Uh, the next one there, four-hour response time, when we do get an issue come in, that's, something's broken and somebody needs help getting it fixed. The ICMA target that we align to is four-hour response time, so that's how we report in LFR. And our number there, you can see I gave historical to show that's going up, we're at 80% now, so that's really good. And of course, that again is the IT department as a whole. Next. Uh, the next line of business is our application support line of business. They provide enterprise application support services, including patches, upgrades, enhancements, customizations, training troubleshooting, and vendor management. Uh, just to list some there, some of the more, uh, critical items, the, of course, PeopleSoft system and financial systems, which includes Cronos timekeeping, cash-sharing systems, risk management system, uh, supporting SAP for utilities, electronic bidding, work order systems, permit systems, code enforcement, and welfare, fleet and field management systems, agenda management, document management, and geographic information systems are all some of what's managed with, among these teams for departments. Next. Uh, looking at LFR, and there's a lot of numbers here, but the first three in general show the same timeliness and quality, uh, within those programs. So you can see there, from our application support standpoint for FY '16, uh, the first two at 98%, the next one at 95%. So our application support, the feedback we're getting from departments is really good, that we're meeting their needs. Uh, the next four measures, four, five, and six, are the same four-hour response time for those individual programs. You can see they're at 96, 98, and 83%, so all doing real well there. So, uh, that's something we look at for those. So our, our support for departments on day-to-day business is really good. Next. Uh, some project highlights for this line of business. Uh, right now, we have 215 field computing devices out there. This is important, because these are devices now that are out there that probably replaced paper processes in the past, and, you know, things like, uh, code inspections and stuff like that are coming back in the system from the field. So, as far as citizens, they're getting, getting that feedback quickly on, on what's happening. So rather than having to come back and be entered maybe a, a day or two later, or whatever, it, it's coming, uh, right back in there. If there's something that needs to be done as a priority, those inspectors in the field can receive that, that day, without having to come back in necessarily and get a print out and go out and plan the next day to go have that done. So, uh, we're looking this year, getting 40 more or so out there, and as far as what I'm seeing now, that gets us almost to where, I won't say saturated, but as far as our field computing for departments and some of the demands they had, the 250 total that we'll have out there will be, uh, fairly well-meet everything people have been wanting to do the last couple of years. That's good. Uh, we're conducting the business analysis for animal welfare. There's new superintendent out there that wanted to do some different things, and so as requests were coming in, we realized we really need to look at this holistically, so we've started working with, with them out there to look. They're wanting to do digital signatures and more mobile apps and stuff like that, so we have that going on right now to, to find some projects to get that stuff done. Uh, work order system, moved to a new platform. This is important for us, because our, our city work system is used by several departments, including general services, streets, utilities, uh, around the city, so there's a, a lot going on. And there's a new web-based system they came out with, which for us will be much more easy to take care of, so we're looking to go to this this year. It's something we've talked about for a long time, we've been waiting for the vendor to deliver, so finally, we're here and moving those departments to that, so that'll be a, a huge accomplishment. Uh, the last there I listed was a new credit card, EMV PIN and chip processing requirements. We're working on that. You've probably heard from the news that the requirement was to have that in place last October. Of course, as you go to buy stuff in your personal life at stores now, you never know whether to swipe or, you know, do the PIN, because the, every, stores and everybody having trouble getting to this point. So, we're ready, we're waiting on our processing card, our card processing vendor to be ready, so we're working on that, and we'll be, have that going pretty soon. Uh, the next line of business is technology enhancements. Uh, this is where, uh, new technology identification, business analysis, custom application development, data management, project management, implementation services, uh, provide the city departments. So, this group and department needs assistance, writing an RFP, you know, preparing everything for council, doing contract, they will handle all this for a department, and, and making sure the technology they get is appropriate and will meet their business needs. Uh, within this program too, is our development guys, which, you know, all kinds of enhancements and, and stuff they have there, which I'll, I'll list, and kind of a LFR, just the way it aligned out, this is where our data management program, so managing the databases falls within the enhancements also. So right now, we have 42 custom applications that are being managed, and when I talk about development team, we're really talking about two people at this point. So they're managing this, we're, we're really to the point where we're struggling to make anything new. We're spending most of our time maintaining what we have. Uh, but as far as projects, the police activity tracker, which you can see a screenshot there, is something we completed recently, which was a big project for the police department. Now they're able to en- enter their, uh, activities straight from their MDCs from the field, whereas before it was a paper process, they would submit them on paper, and then supervise, have to enter that, so you can imagine this becomes much more efficient for them. A construction tracking application, LFR for citizen, uh, application, which is out on OKC.gov, animal welfare donations, household hazardous waste, and open record requests is just some of the 42 applications that are out there and being developed, and of course, like I said, there's a tremendous amount of workload for this team. There's 257 production databases right now that have to be maintained by the data management team. Next. Uh, looking at LFR for the enhancements division, so the, the first one there, this is one we added, and this is our year in FY '17, to go through our LFR review again, so we, we may enhance this, but the problem we were seeing with our LFR was, we were doing all these enhancement projects and custom development, everything, we were having trouble getting feedback from departments on, did we make what you do better? Did, were citizens getting better service? So we added this measure to, to try to get that. You can see, uh, FY '15, we don't have it for '14, because we added it in '15, but it was 100%. And 89% is because, uh, one of the nine projects, they did not give us, uh, feedback 100% on that. So we're at 89%, but we targeted 90. So, what we want to do, we're talking with the department, we may want it, because projects and enhancements are being done across the board, not just necessarily within the enhancements division. We want to expand this measure out, so we can measure all these projects that are going on within the IT department, but we'll continue that and, and see what, what that tells us in the future. Demands, so far in LFR, I've reported results. Demands, here's what we're looking at, what we're, uh, watching. You can see within the, uh, development team, we target, the target is set at what we can do in a reasonable amount of time, and I think the 18 projects is what we set, saying this is what this team can do in a two-year period. Because we assume when a department has an idea they want to do technology, they don't want to wait more than two years to get to that point of having it in place. But you can see, they're capable of doing 18. Right now, we stand at 49 projects on the books waiting to be done, so there's a lot of demand out there for projects we're, we're not able to meet. Uh, data management projects and backlog, same thing. Uh, right now, we're at 63, and they, they can complete 24, so we're talking stuff like converting some of the electronic documents they have and getting them, so they can search them better. There's all kinds of data management needs in departments where they're wanting to, to do stuff with their data, and we're able to do about 24 in a two-year period, and we have 63 projects out there needing to be done. Uh, project highlights for enhancements. Uh, they got 68 projects completed or in progress right now, so one thing we have to watch with this team, they have a tendency to start more than they can do, so we, we have to get in there and try to scale back and prioritize and, you know, and tell departments, this is when we'll be able to get, get to your project, to the point of, you know, if it is an issue, we'll, we raise it up and, you know, get feedback on what, what is going to be the priority as we weigh all these projects together. Uh, OKC.gov redesign enhancements, it's a huge one. I know there's a presentation on 19th with Zach Nash, so we're really excited about finally having this out there and getting OKC.gov to where, you know, it, it's better usable for citizens and on our end, within, I know, PIM and IT is something we can better manage and maintain with the resources we have. Of course, with that, there's all kinds of custom web services. Our development team has developed, we had to convert all that to the new, new format and make it compatible with the new OKC.gov, but I think the plan is to have that next week. So next Monday, that should be live as a plan at this point. Uh, police activity tracker, custom application, which I mentioned, of course, there's enhancements to that going forward they want to do. Electronic ticketing system, RFP for civic center, uh, just went live, developed the application, financed, tracked hotel, motel tax, that's been a high priority for them, which we're hoping to complete soon, and working on that. Extend a Sella system, the Oklahoma City County Health Inspector, so we actually worked with a vendor, so that we could use our licensing, so the city county health inspectors can do their inspections on iPads and feed them right back in at our system securely, so we got that in place, which improved that efficiency. And of course, uh, add credit card cross-payment functionality, IVR, people still want to pay credit cards through the interactive voice system that we put in with the Sella, so we put that in place for that department. Next. Public safety support line of business, they provide public safety application systems, communications, and 911 facility management for the city. Of course, these are, public safety systems are all critical, so those have to be taken care of at a critical level. Uh, the emergency operations center, PSCC, we're responsible for manning that, managing that, even to the point of, uh, we have projects to replace carpet and, and take care of the floors over there, and even painting, so we were managing those to get done this last year. Uh, we have staff that's 911 dedicated support. What I mean by that is, 911 call takers don't call customer support when they have a problem, they have somebody they can lean over to and say, "I need help with this." This is where, from a customer support standpoint, there's somebody there to help them, because obviously, their needs can't wait for, for our response time. Uh, 182 outdoor warning sirens, there's 786 vehicle-mounted, uh, mobile data computers, that includes both, uh, what's in police, fire, and the other departments. And when I say vehicle-mounted and stuff, we're supervisors wanting to have greater access to stuff. Some of these field computers might have been iPads, so that's not included in this count. There's 4,800 radios that we manage. Uh, next. Uh, looking at LFR again, on public safety support line of business, uh, the same one up there is timeliness and quality. They're running real high on, on day-to-day business of serving, uh, public safety needs for, uh, timeliness and quality, so our feedback is really good on that. And then, uh, public safety communications, this is something we added, because we want to know from the people over at the PSCC center, how we were doing maintaining their stuff whenever they had a need, and so the feedback on that has been 100% so far, so that's really good. Uh, just for reference, for workload out there, uh, at the radio shop, outfitting vehicles, non-police vehicles outfitted, we did 124 this year, police vehicles outfit is 120. And of course, you see that's below target, we do what they bring to us, though. That's what was done for this year on outfitting police vehicles. And of course, you know, that's putting the light bars on, so IT staff is doing all that, they completely outfit those vehicles, they come to us, you know, bare, and all this stuff has to be put in. Next. Uh, project highlights, uh, we upgraded the 911 call process, call processing at PSCC. Uh, we completed the readdressing of the outdoor sirens, so that we can do the new, uh, sector activation that was approved. Uh, the radio system upgrade, uh, to P25 RFP, which I know has been mentioned a couple of times, so, uh, that went to council for approval on April 19th, of course, was released next day on April 20th. So the mandatory pre-proposal conference will be tomorrow, that's when vendors will come in for the mandatory pre-proposal. Uh, questions submitted through BIGC, the deadline on that is June 30th. Proposals are due July 26th, and so at that point, we'll have much better information about what we're looking at here for system. And I, I will mention that we put, as far as priority within the RFP, of course, if a vendor is able to use our existing towers and infrastructure, that can reduce costs. We made the vendors aware that the priority is to keep costs as low as possible. We didn't want vendors coming in, you know, there may be some better tower locations, of course, you have to erect a tower and it's going to increase costs there, so they could propose that, but the priority would be, we're scoring on, on using our existing sites as best they can. So we hope to have the approval to council negotiate the contract by the end of September. Of course, like I said, at that point, we'll have much more information about costs and what people proposing and everything, and the RFP included for them to submit, uh, payment options even within this, so we could know what, what we look like going forward. And then, uh, looking out, we hope to, the contract negotiation, maybe not take more than three months, hopefully by the end of the calendar year, we can negotiate a contract and then start going with that. Next. Uh, technology infrastructure line of business, they provide security, network, server, telecommunications, and client configuration services to city departments. Of course, like we say, uh, security is a very high priority for us, but we do it at a low profile. We don't brag about security, we don't want to invite people to, to show us what maybe we didn't quite have covered, but we feel really good about where we're at. And of course, we, we hire contractors to come in and test our system, so this is ongoing. Uh, there's 12,000, uh, network connections, over 160 sites, 300 users, and five call centers, there's 3,000 telecom users in total, just to give you an idea of the size of what's being managed. There's 570 servers, and currently, for reference, LFR measures 79% virtualized. That's lower than we reported for past years, because we have changed where we're reporting that, but that 79% is about where we're going to be. The 79% is important, because that's a major money saving. We don't have to have physical servers for all of those, we can do them virtually and manage them that way, so we don't have to have 570 physical servers out there. Uh, there's 1,800 terabytes of storage, includes that, that keeps going up with body-worn cameras and more and more scanning going on in the city, so I ran the numbers, between servers and storage, we're increasing about 12% per year. We do keep looking at cloud options and what's happening there, it still is cheaper for us to do it here, so, so we're watching that and, and running the numbers. It could be where we move into the future and start maybe backing up the cloud services, but we are watching, it's not where, oh gosh, we, we should switch to cloud, because we're, we're wasting money doing it all here. It is still much cheaper for us to buy our own storage and do it here. Uh, there's 477 CCTV cameras, which you can see, intersection of Walker, and I believe that's Reno, CCTV cameras up there. Uh, next, looking at LFR for infrastructure. Uh, one thing, we centralized management of CCTV cameras, there were several departments that were putting them in over, uh, a couple of years ago, so we, we decided this needed to be centralized within IT, so we could help them manage this and, and get a higher percentage operational, so we target 90%, which is probably low now, because we're running at about 97%. And one thing on that I'll note is, when we say operational, right now, we're counting when a TV, a CCTV camera's taken down for construction on purpose, so this, we're really reached a point where as far as maintaining what's there, we're doing a really good job in 97% reference, what's, the 3% is what's been taken down for known reasons, not because they're damaged or not being taken care of. Uh, another good one is percent of client devices meeting current security standards, you can see that that's increased, that's something we put a high priority on, so, and we're fairly, uh, stringent on that, meaning they, when we push out patches, that means it went to all devices, it should have gotten them. So, uh, on a monthly basis, of course, this shows the last month, there's about 9% that don't get them, of course, we're going and addressing those, so they don't just get neglected, we go and work on those. But right now, when we do our pushes, 91% are getting them automatically, so we know they're up to date and managed. Again, uh, customer support, or customers responding internal survey for communications program, timeliness and quality, it's another program that's running at 98%, so that's really good. I wanted to show there, security work requests, to show that there's a tremendous amount of security work that's going on. We're going to do 30, over 3,300 work requests this year for security items. Next. Uh, project highlights for the infrastructure program, uh, the data center construction is progressing, so if, if you remember, we, right now, our two data centers are, one is in 100 North Walker and one is at PSCC. That's been an audit issue, because they're too close together. In fact, I measured on maps, they're just over a quarter of a mile separated, so it's not good business to have your two data centers that close together. Combined with, we've just had tornadoes, we've always feared, because of 7/4, has window exposures, we've got servers and network that are core to the city that have, if those were to blow out, have exposure, so our, we would know if something were to happen, tornado come through here, it could be weeks on non-critical stuff. Critical applications, we're ready to respond to those, but non-critical applications that, we're ready to respond to those, but non-critical applications that, you know, for departments are still critical to them, it would take weeks to get them back going again, so this will help alleviate that, this will go a long way to alleviate that. This facility is F-5 FEMA rated, once it's constructed, we're going to run this much more energy efficient, it's going to run much warmer than what we run the data center over here now, because certain modern servers are able to run at much higher temperatures, and there'll be lights out, there'll be no staff there, so we're doing this as energy efficient as we can. We're looking at, hopefully by the end of summer, this will be done, this is a picture as of last week, so this is current, we're hoping by the end of summer, this will be ready to start moving servers into, so we'll start, over the next year, equipping this and having this ready to go, and start decommissioning our data center over here. Other highlights, the Sands Institute training, I think this is important, we, this is a private company, developed security training, we've worked with several departments, so that 2,750 city employees receive the Sands Institute training. Enhanced network security access controls, that's a big one that came through an audit that was something we needed to do. Payment Card Industry Audit Review, we're going to conduct this summer, that's something, since we do do credit card processing with Payment Card Industry, they have requirements, they say you need to do this audit, you can self-audit, we've decided it'd be better to have somebody come in, you do your self-audit and you miss some things, you're still liable, so it's better to have somebody come in, tell us what we're missing, we've been working over the last several years to get to the point where we don't think we have stuff that's missing, but we do expect some things to come up, and then we'll address those. Cybersecurity Response Tabletop Exercise was conducted this last year with Police Office of Emergency Management, that's where we involved all departments, went through an exercise of, if we were attacked and this happened and you couldn't get to this, how would you respond? So, that's something we're looking to do more of in the future. Upgrade of in-building wireless is going on, and we're looking at, within the next couple of weeks, having a public accessible wireless within the council chambers here, because that's been requested. Priority expansion of servers, we're, of course, like I said, utilities, SAP is growing, body worn cameras, storage requirements are growing, so we keep expanding those requirements. And then, upgrade of the Unified Communications Management System, which is all the phone systems for the city and getting that done, which is a behind-the-scenes thing, but it improved how those call centers can function. Next, and that's it. Questions?
Questions, yeah, Mark?
Yeah, you mentioned system security on a couple of occasions, and I don't want to know what you're doing with regards to security, but do you feel that we are doing an adequate enough job to prevent breaches, to prevent viruses, to prevent other integrity issues?
Yeah, we never feel adequate, and what we, the Assistant Director and I talked, because we like those guys to be Chicken Little, and they come with every possible thing, and everything's a high priority, and we have to look at what is appropriate. We do have, most of the security projects we've wanted to do, money-wise, we've been able to fund and do, so, yeah, we feel really good about where we are security-wise right now, and it's not just people getting in, you know, it's protecting data and doing all that, and so departments, what I'll say, there's, if you step back five, seven years, it used to be, we were getting in a way of putting stuff in, and we were slowing down projects, and now departments are really are working with us to say, yeah, let's make sure this gets done correctly and make sure we're secure.
Thank you.
Meg?
And I think it's just more of a comment, I think this is the second time in my tenure on the council that we've had to scale back services in I T, and it's one that always a manager knows concerns me so much, because, you know, it is the heartbeat of everything that we do, and that graph that you showed, where we've got a couple of areas of over 150% capacity, have you sort of got a plan that you're looking forward to that is, we begin to recover here, those might be some areas that would get folks added back first, or?
Yeah, the best we can do within those programs is just prioritize the projects and do what comes in order, and we know sometimes departments don't want to hear that they could have to wait up to a year to have something done, and, you know, the development team is an area where we added to, if I step back to 2010, we had the last big budget cut, we cut 12 positions, we went to 88, so being 100, we feel pretty good, and I think, you know, the daily support numbers are reflected in that, but we're still concerned about when departments want to do new stuff and not being able to meet that, and I T people are not good about saying, they love new challenges and they love to be able to do that stuff, so they want to, but it really is a resource gap, so we'll have to watch those, but when we added that position, we've had trouble hiring good developers, so we're lucky with the developers we have, so what's the answer on that? We've talked about potentially trying to bring in vendors to do some of that, but that's opens a can of worms itself, because sometimes vendors don't care about the city like we do, and they just want to get paid and do the work and leave, and so you can spend almost as much time managing, trying to get them to do what you want to have done, as you can just do to do it yourself, so we'll work through this next year, so what I'll say is, when we talk about development team, we are two, we had went to four, we pulled one of those positions to another team because of resource requirements, and once a hire freezes up, we'll look at hiring that again, if we still struggle to find positions, we will have to look at, how do we do this kind of stuff that departments want to do, and what kind of vendor opportunities are out there that will work with us?
And citizen feedback has been fantastic, and I think, you know, we need to keep that in perspective, too, we've added so many things that make it so much easier to communicate with the city, and, you know, that's greatly appreciated, but I think, I just want you to know that we do recognize that this is such a critical area, and having to, having to look at where we take cuts is tough, as it is all the way across the board. Thanks for your hard work.
And we appreciate being able to go back from 88 to, we were, and last year, we were at 100, so we appreciate getting that, back to that point, we had about seven vacancies when we started the cut, so, you know, those were vacancies we had available to meet the cuts, and, so, but yeah, impact to departments is just longer to get some of those projects done. What we don't want departments to do is stop asking and start trying to do their, on their own, which is what I'm trying to figure out strategically, how to accomplish for them.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for I T? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
That includes our presentations this morning.
Is there anyone here from the general public who'd like to speak on anything they heard today, or anything in general? Yes, come on forward.
I'd just like to make a few.
We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Ben Spencer, 2736 Northeast 100th Street, Ward 7. I live in an area where we've got eight houses, where the, you know, the big trash pickup truck cannot get there, and we have no place to put our, so we made an agreement, the city came out, Waste Management came out, we agreed on the place to put our big trash, on 100th Street, I don't, even though I've got an address on 100th Street, I am physically not on 100th Street. There's a lot of private roads in that area. And over the, you know, and this happened 12, 15 years ago, whenever big trash started.
Okay.
And every few years, I guess we get a different driver, somebody gets a big bill, because they don't realize there's eight houses putting their trash in there, and so we had to go through this quite often, and then, last fall, and then the city put up a "Do Not Dump" sign, where we're told to put our big trash. And I've called the action line, talked to the solid waste people, they're aware of it, you know, I mean, I could be fine by putting my big trash beside an "No Dump" sign, it's got a city ordinance number on it, and we would just like that sign removed. But the biggest issue is, is I've got a neighbor that keeps their trash cans out on the street. You know, they fill up a trash can, they take, they've got three trash cans, they fill up one, they take it out to the street, pull in an empty one, and I've called the action line a number of times trying to get, I assume that's a violation, and I've called the action line a number of times trying to get it, they say they come out and they can't, there is no violation, they can't find it, because the trash cans are always there, I've had to get out of my truck and move one to even get, to leave my area. So, they say that there is no violation, they didn't see any trash cans now, and that's another issue, we do not have, it's hard to find an address out there, if I have somebody coming out to do a service, I have to give them directions, I just can't give them a street address. Even my navigation system in my truck has the wrong name for that, Google Maps has the wrong name for that street. The city recently came out and put a white, which means it's a private road, 100th Street sign, and I would, what I would like to do is have those trash, you know, everybody else in the neighborhood pulls their trash cans in, you know, today is our big trash day pickup, but they will be there, you know, they're there every day, so there's no way you could go out there and not see the violation, so that means that they didn't find the address.
You brought up a couple, three issues, if you can give your contact information, your phone number and your address, the gentleman sitting right behind you, we will make sure that I get a staff member from Solid Waste to contact you either today or tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks for coming down. All right, we'll adjourn, the Finance Committee reconvened the council meeting, and we have one item that's been introduced by myself and Councilman Shadid and Councilman White. Pete, you want to take the lead on this?
This is a resolution requesting that the state legislature supports.
Is your mic on?
It's on, but it's on. This resolution is a resolution of support primarily directed to the legislature to increase the tobacco tax by a dollar and a half a pack. We have, historically, Oklahoma City's been in the forefront of municipalities, at least in Oklahoma, with regard to try to curb tail smoking, and this is an effort just one step further in doing that. The, a dollar and a half on each pack of cigarettes would reduce the amount of, the number of childrens that start smoking by somewhere as high as possibly 15%. We still have nine children every day in Oklahoma start smoking, and a dollar and a half a pack adds money to the cost of a cigarette, and that in and of itself would make a difference. The, and there would be some other benefits that would flow from this, obviously, the funds would help the state close the budget gap they have of $1.3 billion, this would help close that gap, it would, it is a proposal put forward by a number of health-related agencies, that would, the funding would enable the state to continue providing funding for elderly, poor people that are in nursing homes, or a lot of other things that would provide, but from the city's perspective, it would just reduce the number of people that smoke, and that to me, but all the other things are wonderful, I think we have some people here from City County Health that'll be willing to talk a little bit about it, but, but those are the other ramifications. We've, you know, we took, we took the lead with regard to banning cigarette smoking in our buildings, in our parks, and this is, and basically, all that came about because we're a self-insured healthcare organization, so we have to pay for the cost of healthcare. The cost of healthcare for smokers is exponentially much greater than it is for people that don't smoke. It's better for people that quit smoking than it is for people that keep on smoking, and so that really caught my attention, the statistics about the reduction in the number of people that will smoke as a result of the cost. It's apparent that just the educational part of it is not going to work, there are people going to continue to smoke despite the fact that doctors no longer on television telling us it's safe, I mean, there, people are going to just keep smoking anyway, and that's where I come from. There are the others, I'm sure that's why Steve sat through this budget meeting, is because of the smoking aspect of it, and how it affects, how the funding would affect E M S A's ability to function, City County Health has, I'm sure, has the same concern, but my personal concern is just reduce the number of people that smoke. So, I would move the resolution.
Ed, you want to speak or make a second?
Just a, well, both, but just a comment, as a physician, and certainly, that's my highest concern as well, and I, I think those numbers are very impressive and persuasive. It's also very compelling that you would increase medical access to so many people, primarily the impoverished in Oklahoma City, and this would allow that, but I think there's also an economic development argument. If you're talking about a $180 million infusion into the state's economy, I guess about a third of that would go into Oklahoma City, about 60 million, it's not, those funds aren't going to be bought online, it's all going to go into the Oklahoma City economy, and I just go back to the finance conference that we had in January, when Russell Evans showed us the numbers and showed that the healthcare industry in Oklahoma City is lagging, the employment numbers are not where we expected them to be, they're falling behind, and I think that this, this is an infusion, certainly, we've made investments much smaller for job creation and job protection other than this, and I think there is an economic development argument, as, and I don't know if Steve could speak to the impact on E M S A, but certainly there would be an impact there, because it's not just, do you increase, you know, the cigarette tax by a dollar and a half, it's, if you don't, they're talking about decreasing reimbursement to providers by 25%. I mean, that's, that's an enormous adverse impact to the healthcare economy in Oklahoma City, and there'd be consequences to that, 25% is enormous, so we've, we know that nursing homes, hospitals will close, but jobs will be lost. That's, that's the least important, I think, but it is an important argument that doesn't get articulated a lot, but I, and I don't want to overstate it, because I don't talk to that many people, but I do talk to a fair number of healthcare providers, and I know that already, even without the 25% cuts, people are dropping Medicaid, they're just not, they can't, with their overhead, they can't, they just are not willing to see Medicaid patients, and that's before the 25% cuts. I think the number of people who are going to be, who are going to lose access to medical care is staggering, if you're talking about 25% cuts across the board. Thanks.
I might add one other comment, this is not, Oklahoma City's not the only entity that's doing this, this Tulsa Council has approved a resolution, and the O M L has approved a resolution in support, they vary a little bit in language, but they're all directed at the same thing.
Okay. Larry?
I don't believe in smoking, as you all know, my father died from smoking Pall Mall's from cancer, this is not, in my opinion, a no-smoking action, this is a thing that was proposed by the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority to raise money, and am I for a balanced budget? Yes. Am I for helping people who need Medicaid services? Yes. Am I for killing or encouraging people not to smoke? Yes. I don't think this does this, so I'm going to vote no.
Any other comments or questions, council? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it passes six to two. All right, city manager reports?
Nothing this morning.
All right.
Other items from council?
Other than what?
Other items from council.
Oh, any other items from council?
I do, Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, sure.
I didn't see anybody else popping up here. I want to say a couple of things, one is that last night, we had our Ward 6 Parks Meeting to begin to talk about some ideas for the upcoming 2017 bond issue, and I really appreciated our staff came out in throngs, which they always do, they did a great job, my Parks Commissioner, Janet Seifelt, was there and helped lead some discussion, and we had some really serious neighborhood supporters, Clausen Ten Ten came out, even though it was their own meeting night, to come provide us some input, so we will have a second meeting located probably much further south in the ward, the storms, I think, probably kept some people away last night from South Oklahoma City, so we'll plan to have a second meeting, but we got some great ideas. I'd really like to thank Eric Winger and Republic Works in our traffic department, social media is abuzz the last day or two about new signage at 10th and Broadway to help protect pedestrians, we've had some serious pedestrian vehicle accidents there, including Paulie, who works for Senator Langford's office, he is very badly injured just trying to cross the street, and our public works department jumped right on it, and people are extremely appreciative, as am I. And my third comment is that I actually serve on the board of Oklahoma City University and had the opportunity to do a 10 graduation on Saturday, and our own city manager, Jim Couch, received an honorary degree, so the scary thing is, we may now have to call him Dr. Couch, I'm not sure, I couldn't decide if Dr. Manager or Dr. Couch, what that might be, but Jim, your remarks were excellent, and I'm very, very proud to have you receive that honor on behalf of O C U.
Congratulations. Okay, with that, let's hear your speech, city manager reports.
I did point out the fact that each, every great city has a great university, and Oklahoma City fills that, and that the type of people that they bring, creative minds, really add to the fabric, we're focused on economic development, and we're focused on improving quality of life, their graduates staying in Oklahoma City really adds to the fabric of our community.
Agreed here. Agreed here. All right. Citizens to be heard? All right, that's it, we're adjourned. Hold on, hold on.
My name is Michael Smith, I live at 21, I mean, 6131 North Main. I don't know why this happened yesterday, but on my, at my apartment yesterday, while I was in my neighborhood, I was walking through and, um, I noticed some dark, uh, cars and another car. The tint, the windows were so tinted, I couldn't see it. I was wondering what they was doing. As, as I went to go look at them, one of them jumped out with a gun, police uniform on, put his gun in my back, told me to get up against the car. I didn't. The other two came out in another car. I got the picture of the car, they didn't give me their names. It was two SUVs, one looked like a dude Dodge Durango, another one was a '07 Yukon or something like that, silver color. And, um, I'm just shook up about it. I'm trying to figure out, I called 911. I should have called 911 right when it happened, but nobody's thinking about calling 911 when police pulling guns right on at this time. But afterwards, I called 911 and tried to ask them about, uh, who I talked to to find out who these guys were. Nobody could tell me nothing, so, uh, that's the kind of stuff that's happening and it's just, it's, it's needs to be dealt with. And, um, I talked to the police downtown at the new police station. They wanted to see pictures of this. I don't know what the, showing them the pictures going to do because it doesn't have no license plate or nothing and all, and it's just the cars, but maybe that'll help some kind of way to show them some surveillance camera or whatever if they can identify who these...
Well, why don't we bring the priest chief in and you can show him what evidence you have, but, but what you're telling us is that someone, um, claiming to be a police officer.